This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Duex?
Yes.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Plankhammer?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Monthaden?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
John?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the August 11, 2014 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council deliberates and conducts hearings and discussions in which we listen to public input, which helps us make our decisions at either our legislative session tomorrow afternoon or subsequent legislative sessions. We do welcome your input this evening, especially those of you who are joining us in chambers. Just as a matter of information, community television is not filming live tonight. They will be taping this program, but it will not be broadcast live. They are having some technical difficulties. Some important items on council's agenda tonight are a couple of public discussions about some street lighting improvements in our downtown area. We'll be talking again about a downtown development plan, and importantly, we'll be hearing some report about a bike share system conference, I guess, that a council member went to, and reviewing an important document from our Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee. After the public portion of tonight's meeting, we will be adjourning into closed session to conduct business that is our responsibility to conduct in closed session. We do welcome those of you who are joining us tonight. As I said, I will briefly review the protocol for those of you who wish to speak. Once I introduce an agenda item, staff will make a presentation. Often, council has questions. After council questions, the mic will be open for public input. When it is open, you approach the podium right in front of council. You state your name and your address for the public record, and then begin your comments. We do restrict comments to about five minutes. We find that it's a fair system, and it helps treat everybody equally, and it helps the meeting move along a little bit. We help you mark your five minutes with a lighting system. A green light means the beginning. A yellow light gives you a little warning that you have a minute left. The red light means that your five minutes are up. You do not have to take the whole five minutes, but they are there for you should you need to speak that long. Sometimes council members have questions, so if you linger at the podium, it allows us to ask you questions if there are any, maybe make some clarifications to the points that you were trying to make. Again, the purpose of public discussions is so we can get your input, and we're not here, obviously, to trip people up or grill you. We're just here to help us gather information for our decision-making. And lastly, if you do not want to speak tonight, there are written comment sheets at the back of chambers. They're blue. You can write out your comment and leave it at the back of chambers, and those will be delivered to us tomorrow before our legislative session. With that introduction, we will get on with our business for the evening, which begins with a public hearing, of which we have one this evening. An ordinance rezoning properties southwest of Keystone Crossing and Bullis Farm Road from R1P to, anyway, from something, a whole bunch of stuff, R1P and C3P, and to adopt a general development plan for a single-family development. Mr. Redder?
Yes, it's a complex title here.
We struggle with reading all that stuff.
Yes, the proposed rezoning is out in the Oakwood Hills area, and just so that you can locate ourselves here, this is Keystone Crossing right here. This is the shopping center with Panera Bread and other stores. This is Buffalo Wild Wings store here, and the new Holiday Inn Hotel here, and Globe University over here in the Bullis Farm Road. So this is the location. Solid purple is the existing zoning with no change. The solid orange is the existing zoning with no change. The only changed area is right here and right here from the previous zoning. Okay. Common Wheel Development has submitted a request, the property owners, for the rezoning of this property west of Bullis Farm Road and north of South Oakwood Hills Parkway. And they have submitted a preliminary plat called Briar Farm Hills, I believe. The proposed rezoning expands the commercial lot slightly here, the Keystone Crossing, to match the site grading for the commercial area. It does not increase the buildable area for the commercial. It does rezone this residential portion, which at this time is zoned for condominium development, resones it to a single-family lots. And overall, the density is reduced from 31 units to 29 units overall for this subdivision plat. With this subdivision plat, there's a lot of terrain. And just to give you a little overhead, this is what the area looks like right here. You can see this is kind of like where the road will eventually go through to Bullis Farm Road. And as you can see on the Briar Hill Estates topography maps, there's a lot of topography on both sides as the road goes along the top of the ridge. These are the proposed lots. With this development, the applicant is proposing a 25-foot front yard setback for the R1 single-family lots. This is because of the extreme topography here. It is to allow space for the single-family homes to build, so it's a shortened front yard from our typical 30 feet down to 25 feet. And this is the appropriate time to do it at the plating of the subdivision and the rezoning. It gives the houses a consistent setback all the way along here. With this rezoning and with this plat, there's a lot of 20% slope, and I don't know if you can see it too well on this map, but there's a blue line here. 20% slopes are non-developable. And so those have to be defined in the final plat by the applicant. 20% or greater slope line is shown on the plat and will need to be legally defined, and these areas labeled as non-buildable on the final plat unless exceptions are approved by West Central Regional Plan Commission. And on this map here, we do have some areas that will be, they will be appealing to West Central Regional Plan to remove these areas because it doesn't, these are envelopes where a house can be built, and the 20% slope encroaches into that buildable area on a few of the lots back along here. And we expect the applicant will file to West Central Region for planning for exceptions on those few small areas. With the original plat on this property, there was a proposed street to, South Oakwood Hills Parkway was proposed to connect up north to Keystone Crossing. With this application, the street changes. Instead of going north to Keystone Crossing, it goes directly east to Bullis Farm Road, so therefore it does not connect up to Keystone Crossing. That was the area of specific interest by some neighbors at this time, at that time. But Planning Staff, City Engineer, and the Fire Department, we all believe that the through street is needed to improve emergency vehicle response and the traffic patterns. It's quite a long street, and needs to be connected at both ends, Bullis Farm Road and to the west, as it does now. The present zoning restriction of this property was approved by the city council and the Plan Commission, and the modified one, which the Plan Commission took up at its hearing, was that South Oakwood Hills Parkway shall be dedicated as a through street and as shown on the plat. Design treatment will be placed on South Oakwood Hills Parkway to discourage through traffic to this area. We had the public hearing with the Plan, there are only two conditions. Let me go back on the rezoning. 25-foot front yard setback is allowed for the R1P portion of this property, and South Oakwood Hills Parkway shall be dedicated as a through street as shown on the existing plan for this property. Design treatment will be placed on South Oakwood Hills Parkway to discourage through traffic. Those are the only two conditions. Plan Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Redder. Questions by council? On this zoning change? Councilmember Lewis?
Is the subject zoning change only?
Yes. If it's not on the street, it is not on the street plan, it is on the zoning right now. Yes, correct.
Thank you for that clarification. I see no further questions. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Duex?
Let me understand this a little better. South Oakwood Hills Parkway we dedicated as a through street as shown on the existing, but design treatment will discourage through traffic. I'm trying to reconcile those two statements.
Well, that's up to your city engineers to come up with that solution.
Well, what does it mean? You're trying to discourage speedy traffic, but you're still trying to get access for emergency?
Correct. You still need access, you still need the street to be open. What the neighbors to the west don't want a lot of through traffic. However, with this plat, they're, we spoke to several of them, they were very happy with this because instead of connecting directly to Keystone Crossing, it connects to Bullis Farm Road. That seemed to satisfy many of them, just that fact alone.
Move here, ma'am.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Previously, the Oakwood Hills Parkway connected directly to Keystone Crossing. Now it connects to Bullis Farm Road, and several neighbors were just satisfied with that fact.
Couple other questions I have related to the plat. With the 20% slopes affecting many of these lots, even though lots look like they go way back, they go up into non-buildable areas. So what kind of an effective backyard, even with a 25-foot setback, what puts the average depth of some of the backyards?
On this?
Yes.
These lots are really deep, probably 150 to 180 feet deep. They're very deep, but the slopes.
Steep slopes, yeah.
Steep slopes, yes. And you can see on the contours here.
Secondly, or thirdly, the areas that you identified that may require special treatment as sensitive areas under the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Now, did the Plan Commission recommend anything about making or applying to those?
That's up to the property owner to apply to that. They did not make any recommendation to the West Central Regional Plan Commission on that. It's up to the West Central Regional Plan Commission to vary that if they want to.
What kind of, I mean, I can't see the scale of that very well. What are you talking about in terms of size of the area?
Well, it varies with each lot. So here's a house, and if you can see the square, that's the building envelope. So it encroaches maybe to a third of it. These lots are clear. This lot encroaches maybe 1/6 into the building envelope. These are clear here. The 20% slope comes right up to the edge of the building envelope of the house. The same over here, it just cuts across the corner slightly of the house. So at each lot, it's individual, and some of them are, this is probably the most severe case, the other ones are really quite minor.
How has that been handled in the past in that area? We've had a lot of issues up there with 20% slopes and what?
Well, 20% slopes are recent. They're not from the original plating of Oakwood Hills.
Since then.
Yeah, since then. The same purpose, you have to appeal to West Central Regional Plan Commission.
That involves getting retaining more or things like that?
Could be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duex. And thank you, Mr. Redder. I see no further questions.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public here to speak about this rezoning, proposed rezoning? Uh-huh.
Either microphone or?
Either one.
Chuck Gable, 1132 Pershing. Where are the utilities on this plat? Are they in front of the house or behind the house?
They're in the public street. Is any plan?
There's nothing behind. Okay, thanks.
Welcome, Mr. Gable. Anyone else here to speak about?
Hi, Jamie Radabaugh, 306 Jefferson Street, Eau Claire. I'm with Common Wheel and here to represent the landlord, or the property owner, rather, answer any questions you may have about the rezone.
Looks like Councilmember Lewis has a question.
I think Councilmember Duex stated this, but what kind of, how deep of a house can you build? What are they looking at for square footage and how, you know, kind of how wide and how deep can they go with some of these slopes?
I represent the current owner, not the developer of the lot. I believe Cody is here, he could maybe get up and answer questions if you'd like.
Any further questions for him, Mr. Radabaugh? I see none, and thank you for coming down.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Bill. I don't know if you are willing to venture and answer a little bit of a design question, I guess.
What was the question?
Cody Phillipsak, 9305 Murphy Lane, Eau Claire, Wisconsin.
Good evening, Cody. My question was, Councilmember Duex started with all the slope that's there, approximately how deep of a house can you build with a 25-foot?
We used a footprint of 40 feet for the house.
Okay, 40 feet.
Pretty decent, yep.
Thank you.
But you can get into slopes, it happens all the time. 20%, there's a lot more drastic slopes than that that we build on all the time. Once you excavate it, you know, you're cutting down nine feet into the ground, so it's making it a lot flatter behind the house. Any other questions? We are looking all single families, higher-end single families in here. I would say $300,000 to $500,000 houses. Lot of interest already. Every lot is walkout, obviously wooded, very nice.
Sounds like a good thing for our city.
I think so.
Thank you for your involvement.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak about this rezoning, potential rezoning, and general development plan? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sean Bohan, 1105 Elm Avenue West, Menominee. I'm the engineer that's working on the project. I came up to answer Councilmember Duex's question about engineering it so it kind of inhibits the through traffic. Just the way the land lays itself, we have some steeper slopes that are going to be coming up, they're 12% slopes on the road, and then just having a curb, and then stop signs both at the end of this road and then on Bullis Farm and Keystone Crossing. Kind of ends up, you know, sometimes they're going to want to try to cut through if they got multiple stop signs, steep slopes, windy roads. So that's basically what we're doing to try to make sure that, you know, people aren't using it as a cut-through, so.
Thank you, that's helpful. Councilmember Lewis has a question.
Yes.
In walking some of the property out in Princeton Valley where they did some of these tall, they're up on the hills, when the snow starts to melt and freeze and then melt again and freeze, those get to be very, very difficult areas to walk. Is that something that has to be thought about here, too, with the snow removal and the snow melting?
You know, we're allowed to end up going up to the 12% slopes for the road. There's just a small section of it, about 200 feet of the 1,600 that's steep. So we try to end up making sure that we kind of minimize the amount of steep slope. That's basically what we're trying to end up doing, so otherwise the landowners have to try keeping them clear. And then the question about, we did end up sending in to Wisconsin Regional, or, yeah, Western Wisconsin Regional Planning. They meet on Wednesday for taking those areas out of the environmentally sensitive area. So they have like two consecutive meetings, so the staff has already written a report that goes to them on Wednesday, and then it's followed up with another meeting at the end of this month, so we've already sent in. Any other questions?
I see no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for the detail of your presentation. Anyone else here to speak to this item? Seeing none, the chair will close. Item one. Turn our attention to item two, which is a discussion of streetscape improvements on Galloway Street, North Barstow to North Dewey. Mr. Silver.
Good evening. The engineer's report for Galloway Street was approved earlier this spring after much discussion with the bid and the property owners. We went back and forth between streetscape, no streetscape, asphalt, concrete pavement. Finally came to an approval of the engineer's report to include concrete pavement for the roadway, concrete meeting, or concrete boulevards on Galloway Street, but not stamped and stained concrete, just gray concrete, tree grates, decorative grade lighting that's similar to what's on Dewey Street now, the pedestrian grade that's 16 to 18 feet tall with the shepherd's hook on top. But no stamped and stained concrete or pavers were included or benches were included in the engineer's report and the special assessments at that time. Now, we're currently under construction. We were approached previously by the property owners of the former Green Tree Hotel about possibly them paying exclusively for some enhancements to the streetscape in front of their property. Their requests included a traffic calming bump out at the corner of Galloway and Dewey Street, conduit for electrical service running between the tree grates, so at some point in the future they could add lighting to the trees as they grow, similar to Christmas tree lighting. Stamped and colored concrete in the areas. The site plan shows the tree grates at these locations, and they're proposing to have the option of paying the additional cost for stamped and stained concrete between the tree grates if they're able to afford to do so. And then also, they'll be requesting an ordinance change for parking ordinances to provide a change in the parking ordinance for parking along the front of the building that will have its first read tomorrow. Here is the traffic calming bump out that was proposed. Our engineering staff looked at it, we weren't able to come this far out, but we were able to come a significant distance out to provide both a focal point into the downtown as traffic increases on Galloway Street, and also a shield and a protection for cars parking and accessing the Green Tree Hotel. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Griffin?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question about the precedent of this and some of the projects that we've had in the past where property owners have been willing to do this, been willing to step up and put in their own improvements. Can you speak to that a little bit?
One of the discussions that we had with this project was we have a highly aesthetic treatment on North Barstow. We have, and we didn't want to have islands in here. The property owner for the block between this block and North Barstow had indicated interest in developing their block in the future and didn't feel that paying for streetscape now that would be disturbed when their blocks developed. So we were concerned with islands. The owners of the property, when they approached the city engineering department, had said that instead of creating a street theme, it was more of an extension of their property. They had proposed to have their own contractors do it at their cost. I'm not comfortable with having private contractors doing work on public right-of-way, so we had said we could talk to our contractor that's currently under contract, find out what the incremental cost is, but since this does change, it's a change of condition from that engineer's report, I think it's something to consider. And going forward, the decisions here will have to be taken into account when this block is developed, at least through the site plan review process and the development agreements for that. So it does create an expansion of the theme by adding the stamped and stained concrete. The tree grates and the decorative lighting were already approved, so it's that gray area in between that would be unique to this block, and it would not be contained on the other portions of this roadway.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. This might be a question for you or maybe one of the representatives from the group tonight. Since the hotel will anticipate high traffic and high volume, high traffic meaning many people using the hotel, would any of these modifications help enhance or, I guess, change kind of the hotel drop-off location where you check into your hotel, you park in the front, go into the lobby, and then you find out where your room's at? Is this going to help people and maybe help our tourists and people who choose to stay in the hotel?
From a safety standpoint, and the representatives are here also, so they could comment on the business side of it, from a safety standpoint, having some kind of a visual cue here with a calming radius bumping out will serve to slow traffic down through here. I think traffic on Galloway Street as the downtown develops, there's going to be more traffic, so this does provide a barrier for the traffic, people, commuters coming into the downtown for cars to pull over, access in, take care of their work, and then park their cars accordingly. So it's safer than not having a barrier there. And then having 15-minute parking or reduced time parking, loading zone parking here, you'll avoid having cars parked there and the potential for people crossing between the cars. It'll shorten the crossing time at this location where it is quite wide currently. It does take a little time to get across here, so that will help. So there are safety enhancements engineering-wise that this does provide.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Silver, a couple of questions. It provides, the bump out provides safety enhancement. Will it be a hindrance at all in the future if we were trying to move a lot of traffic up and down Galloway as a main entrance to the downtown?
It's not out as far, it's, the cross-section here is quite wide. It was proposed originally, it came out to the 12-foot mark, the lane mark, which is similar to Barstow Street, and we're able to get four feet, so we have a wider road than you typically, it'll actually be wider here than it is on the reconstructed Galloway Street to the curb face. So it'll provide some calming, but it won't really neck them down like they do on Barstow Street. Hindrance-wise, with talking with my counterparts in the street maintenance area, it's always easier to plow a street like this as opposed to around the corner, and there was damage that was evident this winter down on Barstow and the curbs and the bump outs. I think everybody hopes that last winter was an anomaly. I can't comment for this winter.
And if I may, a couple of follow-up questions. Will the curb be a J-style or a D-style?
Right now, it's, the plans contain D-style on there. That's one thing that I'm considering, going with a J around the corner if that would help with the plowing and transitioning back to a D. That hasn't been fully decided on there yet, but I would like to try that at some point. And with the hindrance, although we have the parking here now, when this develops and if there's, we have projects on Dewey Street, I could see something similar on this site if there's a gateway coming into downtown to dress it up a little bit and provide some streetscaping here at some point in the future.
One more quick question if I may. They've got decorative lights on here, and I know that's not part of this presentation, but when I was reading the, your little report here, were those, were those special assessed to the property owners?
Yes, that was part of the original streetscaping that was eventually decided upon.
Because the little diagrams, the light poles applied by city. I don't know what that means.
We, instead of having the contractor included in their bid, the city orders, gets their own contract and provides it, and then they install it, and then the cost of that is.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I have a question, actually, probably for the property.
Hi, Nick Meyer, 1602 Emery Street, and representing the group of owners tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Meyer. My question is, kind of, kind of gets along the lines that Councilmember Worthman was getting to. When we talked about the project, originally the design looked very similar to what we have here, except I think we had pavers instead of stamped, right?
And then? We were running both options. We had numbers for both options in case they decided to go either way.
And then we decided to send it back to the bid, and then what the bid came back with actually would have had asphalt. We added back concrete, but all the decorative pavement and the bump outs and stuff were taken out at the request of the bid. stuff were taken out at the request of the bid. So I wonder how common it is for us to, to change a design that a bid kind of requested at the request of one of the owners. So that's kind of the puzzling part for me.
No, fair enough.
I wondered, did it go back to the bid?
It did. It did. There, well, there weren't any, the only thing that's different, well, I guess, there weren't any bump outs or anything in the first drawing that were pulled out or anything. That's a completely new addition just on that corner. But you're right, there was, there were options for pavers and stamped concrete that the bid ended up not supporting after conversations with the, the few property owners. And so our, our opinion, we did go back to the bid and we have a letter from them that supported all of the four things that we're asking for. That meeting was just last week with, I think, you know, a majority in attendance and everyone was on board with that, and we have that letter. But I think where there is one bit of exception is the fact that this, that this is the whole block. It's the whole one chunk of block. It's not a piece of a block, so I think that's part of where the bid felt it was okay. It, it does feel like, obviously it is all public right-of-way, but it feels as though it's all kind of hotel property to, to a guest. You know what I mean? It certainly is city property, but because it's self-contained, it seemed like it might be okay to them, I think, is where they may have landed, which is why they have the letters.
I do like the design. I, I kind of liked it to begin with, and so I just wanted to make sure that we aren't running ahead of others.
And one piece to this as well is that, I mean, we're basically asking for the option to do this. As we get a little bit closer to our own construction and demolition, interior demolition has begun and things, and as our budgets shape up and tighten up, no doubt, we want to just be able to do this if, if it feels, feels like it would work and it would be beneficial to the project, but also perhaps not, and just keep it consistent with, with the rest of it. So we're just kind of seeking that option to do it.
Thank you.
On that one piece. The rest of it, we, we do want to just do the bump out and the 15-minute parking, which you'll have coming up later on, and the electrical conduit.
Thank you.
Councilmember, one in?
Yeah, it's for the, the two of you. The comment that you just made at this point in time is that it, it's an option, and I guess for Mr. Silver, at what time does the option expire?
About a half an hour before the concrete rolls out. We're under construction right now. That, that choice will have to be made very rapidly. The contractor is doing utility work out there. The, the bump out, the electrical conduit and the parking ordinance is seen as not really an option on it. I've got a price per square foot for the decorative concrete, so based upon their budgets that they have, they could have more or less, and, and we'll review that to make sure that it's not so little that it doesn't make sense and it's not the whole block. But right now, they're basically proposing if they have, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the boulevard area that previously was going to be just gray concrete to be filled in with the stamped and stained concrete. So it would be that area basically as wide as the tree grates in front, and then the gray concrete would be between the tree grates and the stamped and stained and the building, like a normal sidewalk.
And I'm assuming based on the discussion you have, the full cost of, bearing the full cost of any change, change orders, that would be to implement this at the hotel?
Correct. We provided them with a cost per square foot and the additional cost for the electrical conduit. It won't be wired right now. Typically, the bids handle installing the wire, but we'll put the gray conduit in so they can run line in the future. And that was agreed to by them to pay all of the additional cost without the assessment support that we put in with our normal special assessments.
Mr. Silver. Councilmember?
Well, first of all, I'm going to speak to both of you. For Mr. Nick Meyer, I'm sorry, Mr. Meyer. I'm Mr. Nick over there. For Mr. Meyer, I would say, first of all, I'm glad you went back to looking at this because I was real concerned initially that the road, the street may be too wide and maybe that could be better seeded or given over to the hotel, so you have some kind of a drive-in for now. And so I'm glad you've come, and I understand the reason why the engineering people didn't want to do that. I'm still wondering about this bump out thing, only because driving that every day as I do, that odd little intersection there, the way the streets need, you know, they're not quite the way they should have been, and the way traffic treats it. We've got that left turn there going east, and that kind of forces you over to what looks like one and a half lanes now that you're, for people going forward, and some of whom are going to go off into the left lane to turn left going south on Farwell and some are going to go north on, on Farwell. How, is there enough with that bump out, and I'm still trying to visualize this, and I'm asking Mr. Silver this, is that really going to allow this traffic to, to get down there, go through that, and then spread out to go right and left? Because it isn't, it doesn't work very well right now.
Well, and that was my, that was my initial thought. My feeling driving through that is that you're swinging wide and you're close to that curb now without shifting over. And I went out there on a couple of occasions and I had Leonesco out there and looked at it, and then people were actually coming through there, they were hugging the centerline. They weren't swinging, they weren't swinging too wide on that. I wouldn't be comfortable having it out as wide as, as it was proposed here, but we do have more of a muted design that we were able to make work that accomplishes some of the same features, and this is closer to what it will, it will look like coming through here. Only this was set up without this, with, it doesn't show the left turn lane, it just shows the middle of the road through here.
Well, there, there's where I'm concerned. If you take that left turn lane in there, what have you got left? One lane to go through, right?
It ends up being a through lane in, in four feet. So that gives you 12, 14 feet, or 16 feet, pardon me, to the front of the curb, plus two feet of pan, so you have 18 feet. And Galloway Street heading out of town is 32 feet. It's 16 feet to the face of curb, so it's actually a little bit wider through here.
And that street, in my, I don't know if I can imagine it, doesn't that street tilt a little bit and it's not, is it dip down to the north right now, or is it going to be more level? Because I think that's part of the problem, too, is it's a kind of high crown on that one.
Yeah, the, the corner of this building is low. It causes problems. It is not, coming around this corner, it is not crowned. You come, it's super elevated is what it's, when you come across now, and features of that will remain when we're done on here. But it'll be, it'll be new pavement, it'll be more uniform. There's some settling out there, the lanes aren't even. But I, I think at some point, if, with the chipper of a trail coming up to this intersection, and, and we're, we're not proposing it under this project, but I think at some point if this is going to be more of an entrance into the downtown, I could see trying to slow traffic down coming into this, maybe a half a block up and then having calming at all four corners on here. Because coming in with, with signals, we have traffic signals over here, I think eventually. So I don't have, if I had any concerns that this was going to be a detriment to traffic, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supporting it.
Traffic signals are going to be going in Farwell?
At Farwell and, and Galloway Street.
During this project?
During this project, yeah. And that's what precipitates the wideness going back with the turn lanes that are needed for that.
Thank you. Councilmember, last one.
Sure, probably more of this for you, Mr. Silver. Will this set any sort of precedent for other development that might hap, happen on Galloway? If this gets done this way, would we look at another block and say, we want you to tie in, so now you need to follow the same aesthetic?
That would be my first instinct with that, with that. Now, as development occurs down on Galloway Street, we have a nice block here. The block across is, is nice with the, the volume one store, and we have that block in the middle that isn't quite as nice as this block is right now. When they come to us, it would be something that we would want to tie the themes together. We would want the color of this concrete to, to be able to flow either through shades on the next block into the Barstow, so we do have more of a unified at that point in time. But yeah, I wouldn't, when the next block comes, I think that'll be visited during plan and commission meetings and, and plan review and if there's any kind of development agreement and so forth.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Stone?
Yes, thank you. This one's for, I think, Mr. Meyer. The, the reading in here says, "entry to the city making it look a little nicer and stuff." And I believe you own the property across the street as well. Is the south side of the street being planned to do the same thing, so the whole block, both sides of that one particular block?
How did that shake out? We do have tree grates on the south side of the block. I, I believe in long-term discussions with Mr. Meyer when I asked him what was planned for this, if it was going to be surface parking, they didn't have any immediate plans. But we do have tree grates, we have decorative lighting, and I don't believe that he was planning to propose stamped and stained concrete on that side. Unless their budget would afford, we would welcome it, but...
And/or the electrical conduit?
The electrical conduit, yes. Yeah, we, we did, it did, it does include the electrical conduit on both sides. In part because it's possible that, that this parking lot will serve the hotel as well at times. It currently isn't associated with that property. But, so having, having like holiday lighting or other winter-type lighting on both sides of the street would kind of unify that, and that what creates kind of a neat gateway coming, coming into downtown in the evening.
Did you consider the, the stained concrete to be consistent for that whole block?
Sort of, yeah. I mean, what I, what I was, what we were trying to do was just have it become kind of, you know, the property of the hotel and have that feel consistent for itself, excuse me. From a, from a cost standpoint, it would be more than we could do to, to do that on both sides. I think if we're already having to bear the cost of that entirely rather than spreading it through the entire project, if it's all on just us or just me, it'd be hard.
Maybe I wasn't following that. So it's special assessed, well, you have the whole property over there, right?
Of this?
Yeah, and, and on the other side as well.
This is, is, is a company I have alone. This is a big group of people.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. The most accommodating.
Thank you.
Lots of questions. Emery, thank you both.
Thanks, David.
Mr. Meyer, I didn't know if you wanted to stay and speak to your project or...
I certainly, certainly can.
It's all, I usually offer that, that opportunity if...
Well, the last thing I would say, I mean, related to that bump out, is that it isn't just a traffic calming thing in our minds. It is, we kind of first viewed it as more of a pedestrian-oriented thing to having a, a good area that, that guests can kind of linger outside of the space and kind of add to the life of the street that way, and also as a launch point to getting them across to that trail system, whether on a bicycle or on foot, and just kind of making that a little bit more inviting. So that's, the initial purpose of the bump out, the traffic calming thing is kind of a bonus and a nice, nicening it up as a, as a gateway, as we've been saying, so.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to this streetscape improvement project? Anyone else? Seeing none, we will, the chair will close. Item two. Brings us to item three, which is the second item in our public discussion portion, a discussion of the proposed amendment number three to TID number eight, creation of TID number 10, and a proposed resolution. Before I invite Mr. Windsens up, I will remind us of the restrictions of our discussion this evening. The discussion will be circumscribed by those three items, an amendment to TID number three, creation of TID 10, or the proposed resolution. After Mr. Windsens gives his presentation, council may have questions, and then there will be opportunity for public input. Mr. Windsens?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid and city council members. It was four weeks ago today that I began my employment with the City of Eau Claire. And since that time, I've, I think I've, I've thought about these project plans just about 24/7, so glad to be here this evening. Distributed to each of you this evening are the proposed project plans for tax incremental district number eight, which would be the third amendment to that district, as well as the creation of tax incremental district number 10. And I just, this evening, would like to go through a brief presentation about those two districts, and then if council members have questions, I would be happy to address those as well. Just on the screen is a map with a project overview. The cross-hatched area is the existing boundary of tax incremental district number eight as amended in the second amendment to that district. The yellow areas on the north side of the Eau Claire River are the additions to tax increment district number eight. On the south side of the Eau Claire River, in the green shaded area, are, is the area that is proposed for tax incremental district number 10. And as you can see, tax incremental district number 10 overlaps slightly with tax incremental district number eight. Just a real quick summary of the project costs that are included within the project plans for TIF district number eight as well as TIF district number, the proposed TIF district number 10. And keep in mind that TIF district number eight has existed for quite a number of years and has actually been amended two times previously. So there, there were, within that project plan, there were improvements that were contemplated both on the north as well as the south sides of the Eau Claire River. Within the proposed amendment to TIF number eight as well as proposed TIF number 10 is funding for a community arts facility. That project, the, the commitment to that project is $5 million, and these two project plans propose that 1.5 million of that come from TIF district number eight, the third amendment to that district, and 3.5 million would come from the creation of TIF district number 10. So that funding would be split between the two tax incremental districts. Also, within the project plan for TIF district number 10 are two components of funding for a proposed mixed-use building. The total amount of funding that is contemplated for that improvement is $5.9 million. 2.95 million of that would be provided upfront in 2015, and the remainder of that commitment would not kick in until after that TIF district had recovered the full amount of that 2.95 million dollar commitment, plus any, any, the 3.5 million that's being provided to the community arts facility. So again, none of the second 2.59 million, that tranche of funding, would go out until the TIF district had recovered the costs from the first 2.95 as well as the 3.5 million contribution of the community arts facility. And then that remaining portion would be structured as kind of what we call a pay-go district. It would be, I believe, over six years that 2.95 million would be paid out as long as the TIF district continues to generate positive increments. If the district doesn't create positive increments, then that funding would not be paid out as, as anticipated. Within both the third amendment to TIF number eight as well as tax incremental district number 10 is proposed funding for the improvement of Haymarket Plaza. Specific improvements haven't been identified at this time, but $2 million is being made available for those at such time as the mixed-use building is completed. $1 million would be provided through tax incremental district number eight as well as $1 million from tax incremental district number 10. And lastly, within the project plan for TIF number eight, the second amendment to that project plan included funding for a parking structure to service the RCU development as well as the JAMF development. Additional funding is being provided for that parking structure. The size of that structure has, has increased in terms of its number of stalls, and a total of $9.5 million is being contemplated for that parking structure. And lastly, the, in 2016, we anticipate making improvements to the streets in the promenade area servicing the JAMF development, and those were all contemplated as part of the second amendment to TIF district number eight. So that's not, there's no new money there that was contemplated in the second amendment. So those are, in essence, the project costs, both tax incremental district number eight as well as tax incremental district number 10 are both blight districts with a 27-year life. Both of those districts would break even. That is, they would recover all of their project costs through tax increments within that 27-year life expectancy. that 27-year life expectancy. Just in terms of upcoming events related to these two project plans, we're here this evening just to give you an overview of what's included in those plans. The TIF project plans will go to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is statutorily required to hold a public hearing on those proposed plans, and that will occur on August 18th at 7:00 in the evening. So there will be a public hearing, August 18th, 7:00, before the Plan Commission. The blight and project plans will come back before the city council on September 8th, and the city council at that time will hold a second public hearing on the proposed project plans. So again, those will both come back before the city council for a public hearing in September. We expect that the city council will take action on the third amendment to the project plan for tax increment district number eight the following evening, which would be September 9th. And then, we anticipate the city council will take action on the creation of tax incremental district number 10 at your meeting on October 14th. And the reason for that, splitting those two up, has to do with the dates that the base value is determined, and we would like the base value for TIF 10 to be 1-1 of 2015 as opposed to 1-1 of 2014. And October 1st is kind of the magic cutoff date for when that, those base values are determined. So there are two opportunities coming up for public input regarding the two project plans, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Winsens. I assume some questions are coming. We'll start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Winsens. Could you explain, again, the division of that 5.9 million? You said 2.95 will be upfront. What are the conditions for the, for the rest of that 5.9 million?
Well, that will all be coming back to the city council in a TIF development agreement with the developer. We've reached a, what I would call, an agreement in principle with them as to the staging of the funding. I don't think all of the particulars, such as perhaps all of the conditions, have been worked out at this point, but I'll defer to City Attorney Nick for any particular comment on that.
Yeah, I think the developer, development agreements are still forthcoming. Certainly, they're based on the same type of project costs, and negotiations have been ongoing on that point, but the entire development agreement is not complete. But we are working and would expect to have that before you, if at all possible, to coincide with your next council action on this. So, public discussion on September 8th, business agenda resolution to approve that agreement, or consider approval of it on September 9th.
Okay, thank you. May I follow up with one? I think your comment was that the 2.9, the second half of the 5.9, wouldn't be dispersed until we realize some increment?
Not only until we realize some increment, but until we have recovered all of the project costs for the first 2.95 million and the 3.5 million for the community arts facility. So the second 2.95, we won't start paying that until we've recovered about over, over $6 million in tax increment from the district.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis has, can I ask a question?
I have two questions, they're not related. So the first one, and I'm sure it's in here, but we just are seeing this tonight. Could you explain to me how the same land can be in two TIDs?
Sure. It is permitted by, it is permitted by state statute. What essentially happens is that when, when TIF 10 is created, the land, the value of the land within that district is determined at the point of creation, which in this case will be 1-1 of 2015. That becomes the base value for that TIF district. TIF 10 will get any, you know, any new development that occurs or any increases in value, the tax increment off of that will go into TIF 10. Any increment that occurred prior to 1-1 of 2015 or any increase in value that occurred prior to that date will continue to go to tax increment district eight. So it's just basically at, at the time of creation, which in this case is going to be 1-1 2015, the, any new increment from that point goes to TIF 10, any increment prior to that continues to go to TIF eight.
Madam President, if I may help clarify that question?
Mr. Seater.
Thank you. Because Jay's just getting used to the City of Eau Claire, this is not a unique situation out in Gateway, and don't hold me to this, but I believe it's tax increment district five and tax increment district number nine are what we call an overlay district. So this, this is not the first time we've done that.
And then my second question, we have been hearing in these discussions that at some point in the creation of TIF eight or in an amendment, that there was maybe 1.8 million or something that was already sitting there to be used for some sort of a plaza-type project. Is that money actually still kind of part of the original TIF? Is that included in your money anywhere?
Good, good question, and I think this actually starts to get out of question. Councilmember Von Hayden sent an email about today, and it may not be clear, but what I tried to do within the, within the project plan for TID eight is show where money was allocated and then also show where it's actually going to be spent. So there was money allocated for property acquisitions within TIF eight. We're not going to be using that money for property acquisitions because the developer acquired those properties on their own. Instead, we'll be using that money that was previously, I guess earmarked for property acquisitions for other purposes within that district. Same thing for the plaza improvement. So I've tried to indicate that within the project plans. It may not be clear, but I think when, when we have the, the public hearing, I'll do a more detailed presentation on the project plans and try to point that out to council members. But if folks have questions about that, be happy to sit down with you and show you how I, how I noted that on the, in the, in the new project plans.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Von Hayden.
Yes, thanks, and thanks for answering my question. I wasn't going to get into that tonight because I know we're going to talk about that later. But I guess one comment that I have here, and the question is, and it may also be for the city manager and the city attorney, is why are we doing the TIF amendments before we complete the development agreement? I know you say we got a development agreement in thought processes at this point in time, but it's not worked out. Why wouldn't it make more sense to complete the development agreement and have that all worked out prior to putting numbers in here, which more or less says to the developer, we don't have to negotiate on these anymore because they're already put into an agreement?
Well, this is a plan. This is a plan just like the comprehensive plan of the city. And the plan itself is really a precursor before, before you would enter into TIF development agreements. The TIF district has to exist before you can enter into a TIF development agreement because otherwise you have no funding mechanism for that development agreement. In this case, they happen to be moving forward simultaneously, and so I think it just happens in this case that, that they're moving forward in that way. Oftentimes, you may create a TIF plan absent any, any, you know, particular developments. You're creating it to stimulate development, and then you're putting in what you are estimating the project costs are going to be as well as the project revenues. So I think it just happens at this time that the two are running in tandem, but it really isn't necessary in order to create a TIF district or to put forth a project plan to have actual negotiated costs. I don't know if the city manager or city attorney would like to add anything or not.
Mr. Seater.
Thank you. Certainly agree with how the plans can be set up. Also, just know that these have been running in parallel plans. So we have been hard at work with the negotiator, negotiating agreement after last meeting with you and obtaining your direction. So, you know, these, these have been running parallel paths, and that is exactly what we've been working on. You have an approved development agreement, you have approved these plans, this, this discussion is certainly permissible but not expected. So, I mean, they're, both the negotiations of the development and when the plan would have come back to you under typical statutory timing were, were on a parallel course. They both would have come to you at the first meeting in September, had you just not chosen to also have this additional hearing now.
And just elaborating a little bit on what the city attorney said, you know, we could put, we could have put $5 million, two tranches of $5 million in for the mixed-use building. That would neither, that would not bind the city council to that amount. It's only, it's really a plan. Any appropriation or other use of funds would have to come back to the city council in the form of a TIF development agreement, you know, with a private developer or an appropriation. These plans do not appropriate funds, they don't authorize the city administration to go out and spend funds. It's merely, it's merely a plan, a mechanism, that as, as the city attorney said, it's permissive as opposed to requirement.
Thank you, Bert. I just follow up on that. Your, the comments, I very appreciate those very much because that's what I was looking for. The second thing here is, is that I think the city attorney said that, that we will have a public hearing on the development plan prior to its final approval. The second thing, the last part of it is, is that you made mention of the plaza costs, and I'm just requesting, so not asking for them tonight, but to make sure when we come forward on this, we have the appropriate documentation for the riverbank along with the trails, et cetera, so that we've got the full cost of those and we're not kind of drawing in the dark when we make our final decision.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Drex.
I just heard you say something, I think it was, I wanted to bear repeating. You said that a TIF district plan that you're presenting here at this time, we're talking about it, is just that, and it is not an appropriation, I heard you say, and not an authorization. So when we adopted a plan in June of last year, that was a plan, was it not? We had a plan that was adopted. There was no appropriation, there was no authorization. Are you familiar with that?
I'm familiar with, with the plan, but I'm going to defer to the city manager since I was not here at the time.
Thank you for the distinction, it'd be what you're saying.
Right.
Madam President, if I may, can you return?
In answer to your question, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Sorry to jump in, but, you know, the, we've had this discussion before, and the discussion really centers on the resolution that council will consider to adopt the project plan. And as you recall, we had quite a lengthy discussion last June, and we had another discussion subsequent to that. You can determine legislatively if you want to make an appropriation as part of that enabling resolution. The council, last June, after much discussion, included legal authorization or appropriation of funds. It's not required, not necessary. There are communities that set up project plans without that legal authorization, and that distinction could be discussed when we consider the actual adoption of, of the amendment number three to TID eight and the creation of TID 10. But it all depends on that enabling resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I remember doing some, a follow-up question, if I could remind us during these tense times that it helps us if we just adopt and adhere to Robert's rules of order and wait for the chair to recognize you before you speak. It helps, it just helps everyone stay focused and appropriate. Councilmember Drex.
What you're proposing, though, just to clarify that, is a project plan for TIF, the amendment to TIF eight and an amendment, and of course, a new TIF number 10. Project plan, right?
That's right. That's, that's what we're bringing forward at this time. As, as City Manager Van Gompo said, the, you know, the resolution that the city council approves to adopt one or both of these plans could contain language in there, and I'm not sure what the plan is for that resolution at this time, but these are project plans, these are plans at this point.
Thanks, James. A couple of follow-up questions to that. I noticed on your upcoming events, there's one called "Public Hearing on Blighted Project Plans." On one of our exhibits that you gave us, exhibit number two on the TID number 10, it shows a number of, quote, "blighted properties." I'm not going to go into that at this time, but I had a particular question about a blighted property that is, I think most people would agree is blighted, that is not included in the expansions here, and that is the Hibs building. And that was not included. Was that just an oversight or deliberate? I mean, I don't understand this question.
I would have to go back, and I can get back to you on that question, and I'm not, I'm not sure which building...
It's on Dewey Street.
On Dewey Street? Okay. But we can certainly go back and take a look, take a look at that.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager would be fine. Just because I know the history on this, and again, trying to bring Jay on board as quickly as possible, the Hibs building's actually in tax increment district number seven. It's not, I don't, I don't believe it's part, you know, we're really trying to, we're really kind of going into the details of the project plan, which are really subject to the legislative process through the Plan Commission and ultimately the council, but the Hibs building, if I remember correctly, is in tax increment district number seven.
We'll get some more details to you, Councilmember Drex, certainly prior to September, isn't
that correct? And one more question?
Yeah, just to follow quickly on the blighted, so, the definition of blight is a statutory definition, am I correct?
There is not a, what I would call, a bright-line definition of blight within, within the statute. It is, it is somewhat vague and has, and can also go back to the city's plans, the city's comprehensive plan, and what is contemplated within that planning document and whether or not properties are being utilized to their full extent or not. So there really isn't a bright-line definition, or it's not a real clear definition on what, on what blight is.
Well, maybe if I could ask a request is that on that hearing or somewhere prior to that hearing, that we get some clarification on it, is it case law or whatever, that would help us understand, because we've had debates or discussions about when is blight blight and when is it not blight? And if we had a clearer picture, I think it would be helpful when we get to that point. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Drex. Councilmember Lewis, did you still have a question?
I do, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Winsens, a quick question about the 2.95 million that is, you know, broken up into two pieces here, and that's what's mentioned earlier by our city attorney, that we're still in the negotiation process on all of that, but, and so this is honestly a little awkward that we're having this discussion right now, but, and I know that's not your fault, but I know that that's just the, you know, delay of land. So I guess my question on the way that it's broken up in this proposed plan is, you know, we have to abide by this idea of the, you know, but-for stipulation in, in doing a contribution of this size from the TIF, and I guess my question is, if we put the second part of that 2.95 so far out into the future, you know, I wonder if that, if that becomes an issue for the, for that but-for clause in the sense that, you know, if you're starting a business and you're saying, well, I need X amount of dollars to make this profitable, but you're only actually getting the payout 20, 25 years down the line, does it still hold the same sort of weight that it would be if we were trying to do something, you know? be if we were trying to do something, you know, upfront and a couple of years later? And I guess that was one of the concerns, and this is new, this is new obviously for the council and the last time we even talked about anything regarding, you know, this 5.9 contribution was in closed session just a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to ask that question about how that kind of changes the perception, not only public, but I think for myself as a council member, about this contribution.
Right. And I certainly don't have as much history in the, in the negotiations, nor was I in that, that particular closed session, but just, I guess, from a philosophical standpoint, you know, the developer, and I'm not speaking specifically about this project, but a developer can structure their financing in such ways that they may have a balloon on their, on their loan or they may structure their debt payments so that they're deferring the principal payment on a portion of the debt until, until future years. Again, not speaking about this project in particular, so I don't know how the developer has structured their financing, but it could be that, you know, a financial, financial contribution of that amount kicking in at some point 20 years down the road may be what's required to, to make the, make the project cash flow and therefore would satisfy the but-for clause. But, you know, again, I don't know the specifics of the previous discussions that occurred and/or of the developers' proposed financing to know if that's the case.
That's helpful.
Council, Councilmember Stroh.
Thank you. Getting back to the blighted thing, not, I'm not talking about the definition of it, but you need a certain amount of these TIFs to be considered blighted property, is that correct?
Yes, 50% needs to be considered blighted, to be a blight TIF district.
And here's my question, can you count a blight district twice? Can you count it in District Eight and in District Ten with this overlap? You're counting, you know, blighted property twice, it appears.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that question.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, not that we're talking specifics about these. So if there is an upcoming hearing and then another hearing where the specifics will be discussed, but in an overlay situation, certainly if the property is in both, it can be counted in both. I mean, if it's blighted, it's blighted and it would go towards both. By the way, there is a definition of blight, it's statutory, it's very broad generally. You know, we can cite it, if not already cite it in the TIF plan, we can have it at the upcoming hearings, but it's extremely broad and it doesn't mean something like it's an abandoned, about ready to fall down building, it's simply that it doesn't further current uses or just further public welfare as determined by ultimately Plan Commission, U, J, R, V.
Thank you for that insight. Okay, I see no further questions. That was an excellent presentation and thank you.
Thank you.
We're now ready for the public portion of the meeting. People may approach the podium, taking turns and state your name and your address and we will get going. Councilmember Stroh?
I just had a question. Are we, are we talking about item number one on there or item number two?
We're on item number three, which, oh, as, as outlined in our, in the agenda item, discussions may encompass an amendment to TID eight, the creation of TID ten, or the proposed resolution, which is on page 27 in our paper, 28 I think, actually. So any of those topics may be now addressed in our public discussion.
Good evening. I apologize. A point of order.
Right, that's what I was going to say, but we don't, aren't going to have an actual presentation on that resolution at all? No.
Okay. It wasn't part of the planned, the presentation came from another request.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, looks like the coast is clear.
Good evening. My name is Janice Nukowski. I reside at 3208 Garner Street. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to those council members who were able to get a public hearing scheduled on this topic. This is important for a representative form of government to be able to get input from its citizens when deciding how to proceed on such an important issue. Thank you. Now, as someone who is very concerned with the preservation of historic properties, I do have something I would like to talk about, but if my understanding is correct, this is not the time you want to hear that. What meeting that was listed up there, would that fit into them?
The historic properties discussion is actually past. We would welcome your input and your thoughts about historic properties in a sort of large way by contacting us, by emailing us, by calling us. We welcome any of your input in regard to that topic.
All right, it'll have to be a phone call, I don't have email.
Okay, we're, our, our phone numbers are listed on, on the website or, well, I suppose, you can call Ms. Merle and she will get you all of our phone numbers, if that's helpful.
All right, thank you. Now, I do have some, some other concerns.
Okay.
Haymarket Concept purchased the farmer's store and the properties in the Confluence Commercial Historic Block for 2.5 million, 5.8 million dollars. You would think that they were considering these buildings in rather good condition or at least some condition to pay that kind of money for them. However, they're going to incur other expenses in raising these buildings or what's left of them, raising the land out of the floodplain. In addition, the existing infrastructure will be destroyed and will need to be replaced. Normally, the cost of replacement of the infrastructure would be borne by the landowner through a special assessment. To me, this whole deal sounds like a bad bargain. It sounds like they're not getting a very good deal. However, Haymarket Concept is a private property owner and they're free to do whatever they want, whatever deal they want to come to. But we as taxpayers should not be asked to provide it with a subsidy to cover their bad bargain. The 5.9 million dollar direct subsidy and the 3.6 million dollar infrastructure subsidy is just that. One other point, the city should not try to do indirectly what it cannot do directly. By law, neither the city nor the state can be party to the demolition of property in the National Register of Historic Places, in other words, the Confluence Block, by way of TIF money. Accordingly, I would ask first and foremost that Haymarket Concept not receive subsidy to develop the Confluence Commercial Historic Block. They made their private deal and they should stand by it, their decision and their deal and deal with their consequences on their own. Also, no fund should be offered if there's no Confluence Performing Arts Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nukowski. We would welcome your, as I said, you're welcome to call us. Anyone else?
Thank you for the decision, oh, excuse me, Cindy Burton, 3242 May Street. Again, thank you for the decision to hold this public hearing. It's long overdue. When I look at the total project estimated cost for the city of 16.5 million dollars, I'm stunned that the only part that's been subject of a public hearing is the 5 million dollar pledge toward the arts center. It looks like the closed sessions haven't resulted in a very good bargain for the citizens. If the request for subsidizing the private student housing mixed-use building had been discussed in public immediately, we could have helped you make a better deal for us. I and many others would suggest that Haymarket Concepts get the same subsidy given to the Metro Crossing Student Housing or the Student Housing Complex at 522 Water Street. Just because Haymarket asks doesn't mean we have to give them anything. This is a dangerous precedent to be setting. I mean, who's next in line, Menards? I have a house that I would like an incentive to remodel. I mean, you know, where do you draw the line? So it's important to remember that no is an answer. The only piece that should receive any consideration for subsidy are costs related to street improvements and even that should still be an item for public input. The Metro Crossing property was purchased for 910,000 dollars. Now it has an assessed value of 5.7 million. 522 Water Street was 266,000 dollars. Current assessment, 4.2 million dollars. That's the kind of economic development I can afford. Their additional property taxes are contributing immediately to city operations, public schools, et cetera, rather than going for years and years to pay back city debt and in the meantime raising my property taxes. Please adopt the resolution and ask city staff to stop investing more time on Confluence-related items in TID eight and ten until the funding status of the Performing Arts Center is determined and the public weighs in on whether it wants to subsidize private student housing. What is the risk? Do you think Haymarket Concepts will leave town or refuse to develop the property? They already own it. Now that the structures on it have been gutted and destroyed, they are required by law to raise them. They really have three choices: develop the property, seed and mow the property, or sell it to another developer. Regardless, there is no reason to provide a subsidy. Self-interest will motivate the developer to do something successful with their property as they've done with other properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. A question, my councilmember.
Do you know how many rooms that the Metro Crossing currently has compared to what they're planning downtown?
They have 84 units and can handle 202 students.
Oh, thank you. I see no further questions, thank you, Ms. Burton.
I'm Pete Bartle. I reside at 3014 Irene Drive. I support the resolution to prohibit city expenditure of funds towards the mixed-use building until such time as funding is approved by the state of Wisconsin for the Confluence Community Arts Center, the private fundraising is complete, and other contingencies are satisfied. I oppose the use of city funds to fund the construction of a private building and if the city is going to, going to commit such funds to construct a mixed-use building as part of the Confluence project, then the city should wait until it is known that the Performing Arts Center is going to be built at its current proposed location. It is certainly appropriate for a city to use city funds to build roads and other infrastructure to open up an area for development or to improve an area that has become blighted. In these cases, however, the city is building something that will be owned by the city. For the mixed-use building, the city is being asked to make a contribution to the construction of a building that will be owned by a private party. While this may be legal, to my simple mind, it is morally wrong in that it is taking public funds and giving these funds to influential individuals and in this case, without the private sector competing for the funds. To draw an analogy, I bought a blighted house on a nice street with well-maintained houses. Before paying to renovate the house, I should have gone to the city fathers and asked for a contribution to give me an incentive to renovate the house and eliminate the blight from the neighborhood. Not having the influence of those backing the Confluence project, the taxing authorities didn't even lower the assessed valuation on the house to my purchase price, nor did they wait for the renovations to be completed before increasing the assessed valuation. This is what most of us encounter as we make improvements that make the city look better. That we pay more taxes when we make our neighborhoods more attractive is an undesirable side effect of property taxes, but it is not right to remove this effect for favored interest. I also note that the land where the proposed mixed-use building is to be built has been purchased for 2,582,200 dollars. It is currently assessed at 577,400. It is my understanding that construction costs for the mixed-use building should come in at something like 26 million for a total project cost of just under 29 million. However, there is at least a rumor that the developers are asking that the owners of this building pay taxes on an assessed value that will be only 80% of this while most of us pay taxes on our total cost if we build a new house or another building. In conclusion, I would like to ask the city council to explain why it is right to contribute to the cost of a building that is going to be owned by a private party and why is it right to base the taxes on these buildings at less than the full value of the building when everyone else pays taxes on the market value of their property? To me, it seems that if the city is going to contribute 20% of the cost of this building, then the city should own 20% of the building and in that case, the developers then only need to pay taxes on the 80% of the total value of the building that they would own. As a minimum, if the council can justify this support of the private sector, then they should wait until it is definite that the Performing Arts Center that this housing is tied to is going to be built at its current proposed location and not rush through a contribution in closed meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. I see no questions. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Anyone else?
I live at 311 Garfield Avenue and I'm a licensed real estate broker and that's what I'm addressing is, is the, oh, first of all, I want to thank you for the decision to hold this public hearing, but to my mind, the public input on any type of decision pertaining to subsidizing the private businesses should be secured at the outset. We as taxpayers are to be involuntary investors in this project, then at the very least, we are entitled to details and input into the investment decision. To date, the entire matter has been conducted behind closed doors. The public has no knowledge of what has been discussed beyond the fact that the request was for 5.9 million dollar subsidy. And based on tomorrow's council agenda, it appears that the city has offered not only the full subsidy, but also a 3.6 million infrastructure contribution. Here are the things that I believe the public should at a minimum know about the venture before any subsidy is approved. We should have an opportunity to review the building and floor plans. We should have access to the estimates of the cost to construct the building and to make the Confluence Block usable for this venture. We certainly want something more than the guarantee of Haymarket Concepts LLC, which is a company with limited assets formed solely to construct the Confluence project. At a minimum, we would want the personal guarantee of the partners and individuals behind the partnership. Also, we need a guarantee that the project will not be turned into a tax-exempt venture for at least a 50-year period beyond the TIF timeframe to ensure property tax payments to the city at least equal to the 9.5 million dollar investment. Will the project be competitively bid and if not, why not? Competitive bidding is probably the best means of cost control. And then there's the consideration of other locations. The location is less than ideal for student housing. Arguably, Haymarket grossly overpaid the Confluence Block, investing 2.58 million or four and a half times the value of the land. Haymarket knew the buildings that it was purchasing had been gutted by the prior owners who removed everything of value, wiring, flooring, ceiling, furnaces, piping, et cetera. Due to the condition of the buildings, it Due to the condition of the buildings, it now has no choice but to raise them, and in order to develop the land, it must also bear the cost of moving the property out of the Fudd Plain. As a result, existing infrastructure must be 100% replaced. Surely, there are more other economical properties on which to place the housing, for example, the 25 acres recently gifted by the Sonnet Tags to the UWEC Foundation, which is one of the partners of the Haymarket Concept. That would be far more economical and accessible than putting student housing downtown. What are the assumptions with respect to occupancy, and what is the break-even occupancy rate? What are the operating details, like annual operating costs and the planned annual rental charge? How does that charge compare to comparable properties for ordinary dormitory rooms? The property tax assessment: will the building and land be fully taxed and assessed at market value, or will the developers be assessed at a reduced value resulting in another form of a subsidy? The 21.5 million dollar increment discussed in the past suggests that there will be a sizable discount. We, as taxpayers, need to know the adequacy of bank or other financing sources planned and the impact of interest rate charges. Performer income statement should be provided of anticipated profitability to determine the potential payback and profit sharing with the taxpayers. Now, these are normally considerations that are asked by the private developers. However, the developer is seeking public subsidies. Transparency should result, and this information should become public. Prior to providing Haymarket subsidies to develop the Confluence block, all the information that I have listed should be available to the public, and under no circumstances should funds be offered if there is to be no Confluence Performing Arts Center. My final question: is there some reason why the city is considering using tax dollars to subsidize private enterprise? I'm sure there are a lot of private developers who'd like that same treatment. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. I see no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Christine Webster. I live at 1401 Emery Street in Eau Claire. I just want to state, first of all, that I do support a proposed resolution to prohibit the city expenditure towards the mixed-use building until such time as funding is approved by the State of Wisconsin for the Confluence Community Arts Center, completion of the private fundraising, and satisfying other contingencies. It's really distressing to me that the city, as other people have stated, would consider subsidizing a private for-profit entity. I do have several questions, but is the Confluence Performing Arts Center, with its accompanying UW Eau Claire Living and Learning Community, also known as the mixed-use building of student housing and retail space still on the table? Because it seems that the Confluence proposal discussed prior to the April 1st referendum has changed significantly during the council's April and July closed sessions. Without informing the public, the city has apparently made offers to the developers that differ significantly from what the public was originally told. We were told that the Performing Arts Center was, for all intents and purposes, free. The $5 million city pledge would be 100% funded by the property taxes on the student residence hall/mixed-use building. There was discussion about the developer's request for a $5.9 million subsidy and a reduced property tax increment, but each time, the city assured us that the ask was for the $5.9 million was just that, a request, not something the city had agreed to. However, it now appears that the city has assented to the $5.9 million subsidy plus $3.6 million for street improvements in the area, increasing the subsidy to 9.5 million. Is this true? I went on the Community for the Confluence website, and there are a couple of things that were of interest to me considering what seems to be happening right now. One of them is, under the commonly asked questions, the question is, I have read a lot of articles on this project. Most of them say that there are conditions the state, city, and county require before jumping on board. What are some of these conditions? And Ben Richgruber answers, "In general, the conditions for everyone are the same. If everyone is in, then everyone is in. The funds need to be fully raised, pledged from all sources, city, county, state philanthropy before any payments would be made from any source." So I thought that was interesting because that's what we were led to believe in the beginning. And also, in reference to the developer... Oh, forgive me. Basically, the question was about the Confluence project and the developer and who that was, and there was an answer from Dan Kompner. The question is, "All this material I read only ever talks about the developer. Who is his character exactly, and what are the projected returns the developer will be expecting?" Basically, it talks about what Haymarket Concepts is: local real estate, Common Wheel, and Market &amp; Johnson. And I think the last line is particularly telling, says, "The developer's motivation for this project is doing the right project for the community and for the university. The partners expect to be treated fairly, nothing more." I would say that, in my opinion, the developers, given the $5.9 million subsidy and the $3.6 million subsidy that they're asking for, and appears that the council is considering is special treatment, it's treatment that's over and above what is necessary for a private for-profit entity. And my answer, as a citizen, is no. Do not extend that special subsidy to Haymarket. Thank you.
And thank you.
My name is Mary Jo Cohen. My address is 1759 Drummond Street. I'm surprised by the suggestion that the link between the Confluence Performing Arts Center and the student housing project be broken. It was always my understanding that the two projects went hand in hand, that the student housing was intended for the art students that would be using the Performing Arts Center, that they would effectively be artists in residence. And there has been some speculation that a possible justification is the belief that the funding in the 2015-2017 state budget is a sure thing. Actually, if the Board of Regents have any credibility, it is anything but a sure thing. In fact, it is highly unlikely. The Regents did provide some very specific criteria almost two years ago, indicating that the development must follow five guiding principles if the state was to be involved. Only one condition of the five has been met: the one that requires the community to limit its request to $25 million. The principles and their status are as follows, and I am quoting them verbatim. Principle one: The entity or entities that will own and operate the private components of the project art facility must provide satisfactory proof of an independent guarantor or surety of the financial and operational obligations of the entity or entities. There is no defined owner at this point in time, and thus, there is no proof of an independent guarantor or surety. Principle number two: The project's operating agreement must ensure that neither UW Eau Claire nor the Board of Regents will be liable for more than their prorated share of operational costs. There is no operating agreement, and thus, no such assurance. Principle number three: The value of the public component of the project's art facilities must be directly proportional to the amount of the state investment in that component as confirmed by independent audit. The value of the public component, that's the $25 million the community is supposed to raise, neither exists nor is audible. In fact, we aren't even close. Is this visible? How does this work? Oh, here we go. Okay. Let me go through the figures with you, as they are confusing, and they do seem to keep changing. The total cost of the Performing Arts Center is $50 million, of which $25 million is to be covered by the state, and we, as a community, are to raise the rest. We do have pledges that are subject to multiple conditions: from the county of $3.5 million, the city of $5 million, and there is assumption that there will be $3 million of federal money available under the Federal Market Tax Credit Program. The state, county, city, and federal add up to $36.5 million, which would leave $13.5 million, a figure I'm sure you've heard before, for private contributions. But the federal program has expired and has not been renewed. Thus, an additional $3 million must be raised. But the city pledge is not forthcoming unless there's an additional $2.5 million raised for an endowment fund. That brings the total figure to 13.5, $3 million, plus $2.5 million, $19 million. Raised to date, we have pledges, and I stress the word pledge, of $5 million, some of which are multi-year pledges. Recall that the community's amount needs to be auditable. Pledges are not auditable simply because they are not enforceable. They are promises of a gift, and that kind of promise cannot be enforced. It's my understanding that actual cash payments received to date are negligible. Principle number four: The project's development process must be conducted in cooperation with the State Department of Administration and in compliance with all project delivery requirements required relating to fair competition and transparency. There is no plan for fair competition or transparency. Such a plan requires that the entire project development, the land itself, be thrown open for competition. Given the developer's financial interests in the sale of the land it owns, performing the development work, and constructing the building, the project is anything but competitive or transparent. It is, in fact, the opposite: a sole-source, take it or leave it demand. In short, if the Regents do observe the five guiding principles they enunciated, no funds will be provided for the 2015-2017 budget. Given the status of the state funding, it is highly unlikely that the Confluence Theaters will ever be built. Recognizing student housing on the site of the... Subsidizing student housing on the site of the historical Confluence block benefits no one other than the current landowner and the developer. The council should put any further work on the project in terms of TIFs, development agreements, on hold. I would like to leave you, Madam President, with one question: what are the council's plans if the project is not funded in the 2015-2017 budget? Will the city move forward nonetheless with the Arts Center?
We will entertain your question as we move forward in our decision-making process.
Thank you.
Is it still public comment time?
No. Yeah, it sure is.
Oh, Chuck Gable, 1132 Pershing. For at least the last 20 years, the downtown parking garage we have across the street has cost the city every year, if you look at your budgets. It has not produced any revenue, at least since the Larsons bought the property for a dollar, a long time ago out of bankruptcy. I was peripherally involved in a project in Boise, from which I just returned, that may have an option for you if it's not too late in your negotiations. Some people I worked with in Chicago bought the air rights to the municipal garage in Boise and built high-rise condos on it, and when we were out in January, they just closed the last $2 million unit. A company from Salt Lake is coming in across the street and spending $80 million of their own money to build a building for mixed use. The federal government has asked the city of Boise and the developer if they could put a transit center in the basement and have come up with $14 million to pay for it. Two questions. One is, if you're going to build a parking garage, why don't you use the air rights and get money out of the air rights above, either by building a building or having somebody pay for it, the value that you've created by building the garage? The second thing is, since you're going to rebuild the transit center within the next 18 months, why not put that in the project? Two blocks and a transit center is not a big deal. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that important, Mr. Gable. Oh, Gable. I'm sorry. Mr. Gable.
John Case, 2113 West Mead Street. I am against giving any taxpayer dollars for building the student housing facility. It does not make any good old-fashioned common sense to give a developer money that is going to... And he's going to turn around and make money off my tax dollar. It is like giving the city giving me $100,000 if I wanted to start a business. Would I then get the money? No, I would not. It is the same concept in this situation. All this project is is more damage to downtown's business area from the historical aspect just to make a buck. Downtown Eau Claire will never, ever be... Look or be as good as it was in the past. Developers have done a lot of damage to the downtown area, especially from the historical aspect, and this is a continuum of that, just to make a buck. Do not waste our tax dollars. If this project is to be forced on us, then it should be done with all private monies. So in other words, do not pass either one of these amendments and do not increase any tax dollars, because in my opinion, after all, it's... TIF stands for This is Free, which it is not. It's using our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Anyone else? Anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? I'll ask one more time. Anyone else?
Evening. My name is Sean Hartnett. I'm a faculty member at UW Eau Claire. They're a head up what is called the Confluence Center for Chippewa River Studies. It's a think tank around about the river. I think the last time I spoke to you, I talked about a train being loaded up with all these plans being put in motion without actually sitting back and doing our homework on each and every individual aspect of it. I also concluded by saying it is a great idea, a questionable plan, and an onerous business decision. I think we're finding is that a lot of the business aspects, and a lot of them haven't met the eye yet, are a bigger concern. I'm also concerned about the plan aspect that we're going forward with. I see this as a 50 or 60 million dollar potential decision you're looking at. The reason for this is that you're taking the city's property, the parking lot there, which has 50 to 60 million dollars of developmental potential, and putting in a park, an outdoor kind of park, very similar to what we have across the street and across the river at Phoenix Park, and very similarly, we have in Owen Park, a park that is used for musical and outdoor events three or four times a year. Think about this backwards. How many people have come to you and told you that we need another outdoor music venue? You could go to Phoenix Park on the busiest Thursday of the year, and the rest of the park is mostly vacant. Why 50 or 60 million dollars value? That's the potential value of building your theater on that site on city property as a public type of structure. I've showed you the diagram before of the Confluence Center for Creativity. I've also showed you that it was part of this plan that was developed in 2006 of looking at this aspect. You can see a theater perfectly shaped as the shape of the parking lot would be a one-of-a-kind theater. It would not be something... It would not be something that La Crosse has or Wausau has. This would be taking a one-of-a-kind site and developing a theater on that one-of-a-kind site that also have potential of being a small conference center. This is our most valuable piece of public property left in town, and this is why it's a $50 or $60 million question, because if we would build this building, this would be a one-of-a-kind building on a one-of-a-kind site. Now, we're using our one-of-a-kind site to build a third-of-a-kind park that we have within a half-mile distance. That is why this is a $50 or $60 million question for you guys in here, is what is the potential? You might ask, when I put this forward in 2006, we had the same thing. I did much of the homework. Homework is my specialty on here. I realized that this type of building would never be built by more or less private funds. We needed a major donor to build this over-the-top type of building. So, everything was designed about that. What we don't have that here, as was pointed out earlier, our fundraising is minimal. Let us not forget that when this whole project was introduced, the low-lying fruit of this, the easiest money to be had in this project was the university dorm, and that's the money that has since been taken out of the way. If you remember the early ones, this, "We have to build dorms," that $25 million went out the window. So, I mean, that low-lying fruit didn't come in. The fundraising isn't coming in. The only way that Eau Claire gets a top-quality downtown arts center is by entertaining a major donor, and we don't have that in this case here. What we're trying to build is, like the Leader Telegram showed, is what Fond du Lac built, looking at their money on public money. We need to restructure this city of Eau Claire, the reason I put it down here, center of creativity rather than arts, knowing that there are major donors available in this town, knowing that there are people, if you give them not just a plan to look like La Crosse or look like Wausau, but to look like a one-of-a-kind thing, an over-the-top type of plan, that you could get somebody that would -- that would be interested in doing that plan. Ten years ago, I was in front of the same city council here. I think I've only spoken on three issues, all of them related to the Chippewa River. Ten years ago, I talked against the -- on the existing plan for Phoenix Park. I'm sure Attorney Nick still has a plan of the last city's plan of it. They had the RCU building on the other side of the road, Farmer's Market over here.
Dr. Hartnett, but I see that your five minutes have come to a closing. Would politely ask you to bring your comments.
Okay. My point then was what made Phoenix Park work, that it was an over-the-top public space. If you want to make this project really work, this is what we need, over-the-top public space, not developer space, not university space, public space, and we've missed -- seem to miss this opportunity because we haven't stopped and done our homework. We're putting a residential building at the end of a business building, a six-block residential building at the end of the business district. We're putting a business district on a residential street, and we're taking the most valuable piece of city property and we're redoing a park that nobody has ever asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. And anyone else here to speak on the side of tonight? Anyone else? Seeing none, the chair will close, item three, and bring council's attention to two presentations we have for this evening's -- on this evening's agenda. The first being a presentation by Councilmember Emanuel on the American Planning Association Training, Planning for New and Expanding Bike Share Systems. I think there's a little setup time required.
I think we can begin, and people will filter.
All right. Thank you. Well, earlier this year, council gave approval for me to attend a conference in Chicago that was hosted by the American Planning Association, and so today I am reporting back to you on some of the things I learned and starting a conversation with everyone here. I would first like to thank the American Planning Association, Divvy Bike Share Organization, and Susan Conkle of Arizona for their leadership contributions and really just sharing their experiences of bike share programs in their community and research. Their materials helped to inform my presentation and also helped to make a really great experience in Chicago for the conference. So, the title of the conference is called Planning for New and Expanding Bike Share Systems, and it was hosted in Chicago. Today, I would like to talk about really these items here. So, a bike share. What is it? Where is it? How does it work? Lessons learned from Divvy, and I'll tell you what Divvy is, and what's next for Eau Claire. You'll notice that I don't have allocated tonight a lot of conversation around drilled-down technical information. If you have those types of questions, I would be glad to jot them down and can work on getting that back to you. But tonight, I'd really like to focus our conversation on these questions, and if this moves forward and if we work with staff on really just any type of feasibility on this project, I would be working with them more on a technical level and really leaning on their technical expertise. So, really, we're going to take a big view on this conference and material. So, the first thing is, what is a bike share? A bike share is a self-service station. So, I would first say, if you go to the airport and you are like me and maybe have a bunch of bags and you're tired of carrying them, you'll pay the $3 to put it into the smart cart machine, and you get to borrow a cart, and then you return it when you're done, and maybe they give you 25 cents or something like that at the end. So, a bike share is similar to that, that you are borrowing it for a short amount of time. A bike share can be combined with other modes of transportation, and so many communities that have a bike share program think of it as a continuation of public transportation. That's not to say that it has to be that way, but it can be considered that way. You can pick up a bike at any station, and you can also return it to any station. So, let's say in -- I'm going to use Chicago as a lot of examples because they have a really great program, and that's where I got to do a lot of the learning. Let's say I was in Chicago, and I was at Navy Pier, and I picked up a bicycle there, and then I had to go to a meeting, and it was more by Millennial Park. I could pick up my bike from Navy Pier, ride my bike over to Millennial Park, which might be, I don't know, 10-minute bike ride, 15-minute bike ride, and I can return it there. So, just because I picked it up from location A doesn't mean that I need to return it to location A. They are available 24/7, year-round. They are often in 30-minute increments, and they're often referred to as being perfect for the first and the last mile. So, the reason why the Chicago bike share name is Divvy is really to play on the word division or divide, and they really talk about dividing the ride. And so, you might use some form of automobile transportation, you might use bus transportation, you might use your legs as transportation. It's really helping to divide some of those longer travel miles, and so they really think about using a bike share for the first and the last mile for your destination. So, where do we see bike shares? Well, we think of them in the realm of tourism, which you can see in the first picture there. We took a -- we had a long stoplight, so we were all about the selfies in the city. So, think about it as tourism. The second photo there is a neighborhood where bike shares are prevalent, and it's also a neighborhood that has Bicycle Boulevard, like Belmont here in Eau Claire. And then, we see them in public spaces. So, the third photo is actually of one of the larger libraries in Chicago. You can see some of the gargoyle artwork above, and really down below, teeny-tiny, you can see a bike share station. We see bike shares in urban bike trails and also people using them to and from work. Around the country and really around the world, we have seen bike shares come up in major metropolitan cities, and now we are seeing smaller communities realize the benefits of a bike share program, thinking about communities outside of the Milwaukee area, in Minnesota, smaller communities, and even a community in Indiana that has started a bike share program dedicated to about six miles of public artwork around the city. And they actually found that people are riding their bikes more through the bike share program and enjoying some of that public art along the bike trails, even in the dead of winter, which they were shocked about. Their bike share program is called the Pacers Program after the basketball team. Okay, so now, we're going to go over five steps on how a bike share works. The first thing you'll do is you will buy it, just like if you went to the airport to get your luggage machine, you put your little card in, your three bucks in. So, in Chicago, you can pay $7 for a 24-hour bike pass, and what happens is, you get to use that bike for 30 minutes. If it's beyond 30 minutes, then you are charged according to the terms and agreements. However, most people figure out how to use the bikes for 29 minutes, put it into a machine, and take it back out. And I, when I was at the conference, I asked the director of Divvy, who is overseeing one of the biggest bike share programs in the entire world, and I said, "Why aren't you concerned about people gaming the bike share, you know, system, 29 minutes, 28 minutes, putting it in, taking it back out?" And he said, "No, this is great. If people want to use their 29 minutes and take the bike back out because they want to ride their bike more, that's a great thing." So, they welcome that, not only as public transportation, but now thinking about the implications of healthy living and healthy lifestyles. So, you can see there's two different key colors, and one is for different types of membership levels. The second step is, you take your bike. There's your fancy van of white there. So, you pick a bike out from the station. The third is, you ride your bike. So, if you're going to work, all of those places we talked about, maybe you want to head to the library, you want to head on the bike trails, but you take it for a ride. And then, the fourth step is, you're going to return it. So, the first photo is an empty bicycle space, and you slide it right in, and it has computer sensors, it knows what bike came in, it knows how long it was out, all the computers talk to each other, and then you see the bike there in place. And then, the fifth step is, you repeat it. So, you see, that's a full bike rack there. Then, we think about, how do each bike racks know, you know, okay, we need 15 bikes or something's running low? Well, the computers then would talk to each other and say, "Station number 14 has three bikes left, and at 5 o'clock, there's going to be a mad rush for bikes." So, then, they take the Divvy van, and that van is full of bikes, and it just goes around town all day long, filling up bike stations, or maybe picking up surplus bikes that have been checked in, putting it another place that they anticipate a rush. Before I go on, does anybody have any burning questions? Are we okay to go on? Looks like we're good. Okay. So, now, here's some information, really some lessons learned from the conference and specifically with the Divvy Bike Share Program. What they talk about is what they're all about, and you'll see, I've staggered this in two phases. So, the first thing they talk about is really being a new transit -- type of a transit system, giving Chicago residents and visitors a bike-on-demand to go to really hundreds of places across the city, and that it's convenient, fast, fun, and affordable. But wait, there's more. There are other benefits and goals that they're realizing is that it's -- bike share programs are promoting a healthy lifestyle and active lifestyles and healthy living. It's, again, the innovative transportation system. It improves livability and economic competitiveness, promotes culture and safety for and by bicyclists. And there's also an element that I learned about of really using bicycle share programs to help address equity and access for people who are neighbors in underserved communities. So, some of the technical things about this, just very big-picture technical things. They found that the stations, they made them very easy to install, where they can install an entire station, which would be those racks of bikes of 10, 15, 20 bikes in about an hour. They're able to use green energy, so solar-powered and wireless energy, and they're also easily moved. They found that people were starting to ask for bicycle share programs to be set in front of their businesses because the businesses were starting to enjoy benefits from new consumers that they hadn't captured before. And then, how people decide where a bike station should be sited is, you can look at population data, census data. So, here are some maps as an example of employment density and population density, so really making those matches. Where do we have a high concentration of people living? Where do we have a high concentration of people working? And as we know, in Eau Claire, we have about 25% of our workforce that works downtown. So, we're looking at about 13,000 people who work and live, well, specifically work in downtown Eau Claire. There's more than that that live down here. So, thinking about where might be a logical step, I certainly think downtown Eau Claire would be a logical step if we're thinking about some of these bigger-level concepts. So, this is not just for tourists, and it's not just for people taking a leisurely ride after the Farmer's Market on Saturday, that this is a real mode of transportation that could really help to be a partner in a city. Some facts that they did research about some of their members is, they found, there's, I guess I won't go through all of it with you, but it just shares ways that people learned about the bike share program, whether it's from the media, friends, social media. The top 10 things, part of the top 10 things that motivated people to join, and that means become a member of the bike share program, is 85% of people said that they could get around more easily and faster. 60% said that they had a station near home or at their work. 66% said they liked biking. 51% said they'd save money, they predicted they would save money on transportation, and 51% also said they would enjoy some benefits of exercise and fitness. So, they have surveyed their members, and they found that 97% of their members are satisfied or very satisfied, which is pretty darn good satisfaction rate. When they're asked if they would recommend a bike share program, 9.1 people out of 10 said that yes, that they would. And then, it talks about some other things of ways people use the bike share program, which we've talked a little bit about. So, one fact that I thought was really interesting is that each of their members saved on average almost $800 per year on transportation costs, and businesses said that their access to having a bike share in front of their building made their establishment more attractive. And now, 62% of the bike share members And now 62% of the bike share members have started riding a bike, or taking public transportation to work more often since joining the bike share program. I think that's pretty substantial, when we look at some of our transportation issues here in our community, and thinking, how do we increase ridership and usership? This certainly is a way that has worked in other communities. So what's next for Eau Claire? Well, I think we need to have continued conversations, and I think we're at a step where we should pursue a feasibility study that would include many topics. The biggest question I think we have to answer is, is this realistic for Eau Claire? Before we can get all excited, which you can see, I am very excited, I think we need to have a very sober conversation of, is this the right thing for Eau Claire? Is this the right time for Eau Claire? And so if we were to have a feasibility study, I would make a strong recommendation that we have somebody just reckon with us, and just be real frank, and say, "You know what? This is not going to fly in Eau Claire." Or, "Yeah, actually, this could fly in Eau Claire, and here's how." Okay? So if the answer is yes, that this could be realistic for Eau Claire, then I would anticipate we'd try to answer questions such as the recommended business model, what does oversight and ownership, storage and maintenance look like, where are location identifications, which would mean the docking stations, and then also the bicycle recommendations. So we would have to look at that, or whoever "we" is. And that's obviously off in the distance and yet to be decided. We would want to look at recommended management and performance indicators. So we see that the DIVI program was able to capture a lot of data on what people thought beforehand, what they thought afterward, and so we would want to capture what's important for our community, what would we consider to be a positive indicator for performance. Also need to look at some land use, zoning and infrastructure, I guess at least an analysis, if not some changes. So there probably would need to be some zoning changes, if we think about siding a bike share, basically rack, on a street. That would be new for Eau Claire, so we'd need to look at those things. And then the impacts, whether it's a positive, or an opportunity for growth on a multimodal transportation system here in our community. So that's it, and I'd be glad to take any questions. I see, oh, it's not my job to ask, so I'll just stand here.
What first question, Councilmember?
Thank you. Councilmember Emmanuel, did they share with you what the population of the geographic area served by these locations is, and how many people work in that geographical area, and how many bikes they have?
I know that they do have a recommended, is it okay if I just answer? You don't need to call on me each time to answer, correct?
I do.
Okay, good. I understand that city planners do use a certain type of calculation, and that would be conducted in a feasibility study. So off the top of my head, I don't have that. I know that a bike share program is, they made it abundantly clear, this is not restricted to large metropolitan cities, that smaller communities can enjoy benefits of a bike share program. If you would like me to get some calculations, I'd be glad to.
I will do a feasibility study.
All right.
Councilmember Larsen?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, it's very well done. Just thinking, just sort of off the top of my head, as you're going through this, it seems like our network of bike trails kind of suits this possibility with the connection between downtown, you know, Carson Park, a future event center on Omni Street, possibly the Y M C A on Omni Street, and other locations. So, you know, it seems like an interesting possibility. Do you think that Clear Vision Eau Claire might be a venue or a vehicle where this could be studied further?
I think it is. I've heard that Clear Vision, just last week, I heard that they're interested in maybe picking some new topics to examine, and so I could definitely pass it on to them. I know that there has been, people knew that I was very interested in this topic, and so I've had a lot of people in the community, whether it's local government, or business owners, or just interested citizens, contact me and say, "If you get a group together to look at this, I'd really be interested." And so one of the things that Clear Vision is interested in is using a civic engagement model, that's out of the Center for Democracy and Citizenship, that uses this model called Public Achievement, and one of the main things they try to use is what is engaging people's self-interest. And so we have already a really nice network of people who have their, identified their self-interests, that, "Yeah, I'd really be interested in seeing this," and people have different lenses of what brings that interest. So I think that's a great suggestion, and I've got it noted down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larsen?
Sure. Were there any examples of communities that have actually been able to operate this at a profit, or do you see this being like almost every other city, that this would be something that we provide as a public service, and then it's subsidized like other transit?
Good question. So there are several communities that are running this as a for-profit entity, and so that would be a question, a good question to look at, at a feasibility study, is if this were to come to Eau Claire, what would be the operation model, which I think I had on the second to the last slide there? So would this be a part of a public transportation model? Would this be part of a private nonprofit group? Maybe it's a for-profit group that takes this on? Is it a hybrid of the two? And so those are all on-the-table options for communities who are looking at this, and they have been successful in different communities for different reasons. So I don't know, off the top of my head, or even after attending this, I didn't get a good pulse of, "Okay, I know for sure, this type of model will work for Eau Claire." I don't know that. And so I think it's a good sober question to ask if we do a feasibility study.
Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. The question probably to Councilman Monica Jolias, but have you noticed any other cities that have that bike share program, besides Chicago?
Yep. So there are bike share programs, really, all around the United States, looking at, I didn't bring my map with me of the bike shares that they had plotted on the map, but California, Oregon, I think Washington has them, Minnesota, they have partnered with a medical community, it's called Nice Ride Minnesota, and they are sponsored, a big sponsor of theirs is Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that actually use some of, I went to graduate school with one of the people that helped that project go, and she was actually in charge of their civic engagement efforts. So it's kind of neat just to see the different stakeholders come through. So I guess I'm geographically going through the map in the United States. Plenty of cities along the East Coast, I was in Washington DC earlier this year, and was able to see their bike share program there as well. So we see them in big metropolitan cities, not only in the United States, but also around the world. And as I was, I had the opportunity to learn about, is that many smaller communities are taking this on with populations smaller than ours. Some communities are even using their Community Block Development Grant dollars to help study this, to help fund this, because there is definitely an equity component to this, where maybe people who have a lower income might be able to qualify for this, who are already having transportation issues. Maybe having access to a bicycle share program would help people get to their work on time. So there's several different components with the equity aspect, the health aspect, that communities are starting to realize. And so it's big cities, and then it's also smaller communities and smaller population than Eau Claire has.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council, just have a question, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, have you brought this before the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
No. I have waited to give a presentation to you all first. I appreciate that you all believed in me to attend this conference, and I have had people request that I give a presentation, and I've told them I need to wait until I share with my colleagues first. And so now I'll be ready to share.
Mr. City Manager?
Just a follow-up on Councilmember Shaw's question before. I do know that the city of Milwaukee is currently exploring the possibility in two suburbs adjacent to the city of Milwaukee, city of Wauwatosa is a community about our size, and the city of, Village of Shorewood is actually only about 10,000 or 12,000 people directly north of the city of Milwaukee. They're also exploring the option of creating programs, Wisconsin communities.
Councilmember Van Haden?
This is not so much a question, but I was up in the Twin Cities a couple weeks ago. They don't just have bike share, they have car share.
I've done the car share.
Did you use one?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I have done.
Okay. But I'm going to say, they're doing it with the little cars in Minnesota.
The Austin car, or the, no, the gold car? They have them in Seattle and Austin.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very interesting. I was sitting downtown Minneapolis after the ballgame, and the little cars were buzzing around, and they got their place to park, and people grabbed them, and away they go.
I think they're called Ugo? Ugo, is that right?
There's two kind of ride-share programs, more like a taxi cab, one's Uber, and one's, I forgot the other one. Yeah, that's something else, sorry, rough tack, popping.
I noted in the Transportation Alternative Program, the state program awards for 14 and to 18, that the city of Wauwatosa was awarded $426,000 to get their bike share going. Somewhere in that four-year period, I guess, so. You can apply for state DOT funds, funds for, in this alternative program. Okay, an excellent presentation. You can please take your seat, and then I'll ask if there are members of the public who have a question. Oh, Councilmember Worthen just whispered in my ear that he has a question, and then he put his light on. Councilmember Worthen?
One other question. Thank you for the presentation tonight as well. Is there any issues with vandalism, or are these generally pretty, people leave them alone, they're pretty safe? Because I know that's sometimes an issue with these kinds of infrastructure, I suppose.
So are you talking about vandalism or theft, or now that I've said both, we'll go for both? I don't recall anything on vandalism, and doesn't mean that there isn't, I just don't recall that, so I shouldn't comment on that. As far as theft goes, there's a couple of things that have gone on. One, the way that you get a bicycle is you have to swipe something that ties back to your identification. So I guess if somebody steals, if I had a membership in my wallet, and somebody stole my wallet and stole a bike share, and never returned the bike, I guess they could say, "It's me." But you build into the agreement, whoever the operator is, of what do we do with theft? And so that probably would be considered by insurance, because I would have to file a police report and say, "Somebody stole my wallet," and subsequently stole a bike. They have had two bikes stolen, I believe, in Chicago. And one was returned pretty quick, and another one, I don't remember the fate of it. This is out of thousands of bicycles, one was stolen. And the reason why it's such a low theft rate is because they are kind of a sore thumb. Who wants to steal a big old bike with, I mean, you can't hide with it. You can't, you just can't hide with it. So there's talk about, you know, would GPS be used as part of finding the bicycles? Right now, Chicago, from my last discussion with them, which was earlier in June, they didn't feel like that was necessary, and they weren't doing that at that moment in time. But I don't speak for them, so they might have changed since then.
Thank you again, Councilmember Emmanuel. This is part of our public presentation. I would just ask if members of the public have a comment they wish to make. Seeing none, we'll close that item then. We do have one more item on our public portion. Item five is a presentation by the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee on the 2014 Report of Committee Study Recommendations. Councilmember Strobel chairs that committee, and I will call on him to begin the report. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I can't quite, we might have to follow that presentation by Councilmember Emmanuel. Very nice job.
You will do too.
Yeah. The committee wants to thank Mr. Ron Gumpel and all the city staff that assembled and gave presentations for this report, and attended meetings. A special thanks to Ms. Monroe for keeping us on task, scheduling our meetings, and making this whole report make sense. Although, maybe next time, I maybe request some pictures and a PowerPoint.
This is a fantastic report.
I know, I know. It's a pretty detailed report, there's many attachments. Each committee member is going to take a couple sections and try to go pretty quickly through that, run through our recommendations, some of which we hope to bring to the full council for consideration. I'm going to handle the white-way lighting and special assessments. Councilmember Lewis is going to do snowplowing, special events, and asphalt versus concrete. And Councilmember Larson is going to run through the budget process. So I'll just quickly get into the white-way lighting policy. The city engineer attended many of the meetings, and we've got a lot of background on, actually your attachments, page 62 and 63, Ian, they have a lot of the information on the white-way lighting and the special assessment stuff. Basically, on the shoebox lighting system, the city charges 2/3 of the cost of that to the property tax owner, and on the decorative lighting, they actually charge 100% of the cost to the property owner. Streetscaping items are charged at 100% to the property owner, so the papers and that type of thing are all 100%. And then there's also a power and maintenance assessment that goes only on commercial properties. That's charged per lineal foot, based on regular lighting, 75 cents a foot, and a dollar twenty a foot if it's a decorative lighting system. So as clarified below under the recommendations, previous is to explore the impact of amending the policy, so that an owner that has provided decorative lighting receives a credit or an offset to the cost of the decorative lighting, equal to the normal city contribution on a basic shoebox lighting. Further, the committee asks staff to consider the feasibility of adding a power and maintenance category for the LED lighting, that would reflect the lower operating and maintenance costs. So under our recommendations, decorative lighting should only be assessed on an additional increment over the standard model. And then the use of LED lights should reflect the cost savings in utility and maintenance charges. Couple examples on that are the lights on Barstow Street. One of the reasons the property owners down there went with those lights is because they were LED lighting, and they were very low maintenance. I think Mr. Spitz said you have to change the bulbs once every 10 years only. And also, the power consumption is probably 50% less than a standard light. So we thought that, given that, that we should look at those assessments for those types of situations. Then, under number two, review the policy for assessments, special plantings, and other amenities, including provisions for advance notice and planning. The committee wanted to see pricing schedules sent to property owners with cost estimates of basic pricing, and with the proposed streetscaping pricing for comparison purposes, and that those cost estimates not only included the lineal foot, which a lot of people got, but also the total projected cost per property. So in other words, if the property owner is going to be charged $10,000 for the basic, and $15,000 for the increase, it's a little easier for them to understand the difference. And then a couple other recommendations under that. Coordinate projects over a multi-two-year cycle. Review the boulevard plantings and consider low-maintenance plants. And then one that we sort of came up with here towards the end is to utilize the city volunteer coordinator to create a mechanism to assign responsibility for the care and maintenance of the boulevards and the special planting areas, while educating the property owners, the business improvement districts, and the neighborhood associations on their responsibilities for maintenance of those planting areas. So that's my section. I don't know if anybody has any questions? If not?
Questions for, Councilmember Mitchell has a question. Thank you. On page 37 or 4, under the recommendations, I think this is the section you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Pricing schedules, this was a conclusion, the pricing schedule should be sent to the property owners, you see that, the first conclusion?
Correct.
And cost estimates, don't we do that?
Well, what we found is that a lot of times, we did not, the property owners did not get those final cost estimates till actually, they were almost, when it was coming to council. If you remember on the Barstow Street thing, a lot of the folks were surprised by that. And now, the city engineer said they have a pretty good grip on what the basic is, and what the papers would be, what colored concrete would be, and felt pretty confident that they would be able to give those, not exact costs, but more of a difference in cost, ahead of time.
Then I think that, that's what it should say here, the problem, one of the big problems there was timing, and that's not what this says. It just says they should get estimates. So I don't know if you really need to change that, but I think that that should be clear. It makes it sound like they were never given cost estimates, and that's not the case, but... But the timing of it is, something for your next committee agenda.
Yep. Anybody else that wants to answer that?
If I may comment.
Uh huh. Councilmember Larson.
I think that was the, that was clear from our discussions with staff and among the committee members. I think you're right, it could be worded better in the report. I don't know what we can accomplish by going back and changing the report at this stage. But be assured that that is kind of the point of our conversation that could come out earlier.
Thank you. And I do not suggest that you change this, no, I just want to bring that up. God forbid, don't start. Councilmember Lewis, are you ready?
Sure. And I'm just going to add a little something there, that in the report we're giving tonight, it's letting you know what we are working on and in the next few months, some of these things may actually come back to council if they do require a wording change in policy, if there's some ordinance change or something. So, we're reporting what we saw. There may be future work that comes from this, which is where you'd see we're setting timetables of when that should go up. So, I was going to talk about the follow-up on the snowplow policy. We did discuss this last year and we wanted to see what would happen after one year of trying some of the new things. And one of the things we learned is brine is good unless it's really cold. And when you have a super cold winter, the brine didn't work as well as they expected. However, it does have good potential, will keep going. Another thing we wanted to see is what the effect of some of the employee things that went through with the contracts and how we could work employees, what those hours would have an impact on the budget. And that was something that we want to support. What the staff has shown is they would like to go to more of a 12-hour plowing cycle compared to what they had and they think they can be much more reactive with that. So, we wanted to support staff and looking forward to that. We also talked about privatizing the sidewalk snow removal, not to be misinterpreted with any other type of snow removal. And this was, came about talking, one about downtown, where they were so busy getting snow off the roads that we had a lot of downtown streets that weren't getting the snow off of the sidewalks fast enough. And also, we have landlords and property owners that do not keep their property, the sidewalks clean. And what could we do because the city staff didn't have time? And this is one we're going to continue to look at because our understanding is the first RFP that went out on this did not get very good responses for private snow plowing. But a second RFP was done, people were explained a little bit more what we're looking at. So, this is something that as the city staff learns more, will come back to us. One of the things we were most concerned about is this would be a change and how do we notify homeowners that this is going to start happening to make sure that the city costs were being built in, which we were assured by everyone on staff that that is fully in the charges that would go out to citizens. But just, do we run a test one for a year? What future budget costs there might be? There may be upfront costs that we have that we don't settle until all the bills are collected after the tax rolls come in. So, that's still going to all be reviewed. We also took a look at the asphalt versus concrete on our roads. This is another one. I'm lucky, I got the section that we're still reviewing. We want to continue to look at this. What we found is the pavement is actually, asphalt is cheaper than concrete to put down initially, but you repair asphalt a little more often. Also, the first repaving does not get charged to the homeowner, only the second one. So, we wanted to see some more costs of the whole life cycle of a road. If we do it this way, they don't pay for this, then what happens? The other thing we were hearing about is that for some reason, we're having failures quite, that we're not expecting in concrete. The concrete should be lasting longer than it is. Another thing here, we wanted to support staff is they're looking at some things that maybe we get into a two-year cycle with street construction where it's a design and bid and then you build so that we're not doing roads late in the year. So, again, we're going to continue to study that to see what actually the fiscal impacts will be to the city. And the last one that we looked at, we were looking at what special events do to our businesses. And one of these is, we looked at, the one part we did look at is actually special events are special events. When we close a road to have a parade, when we close a road for a downtown business day. How are the businesses notified? What is the application process? What are the costs? And how are those all covered? And in getting to review that, we found that this is actually being handled quite well from the standpoint of city costs. We did not necessarily see a great way to handle notifying businesses. We did have some complaints that they closed my road for the whole day, I'm a hair salon, nobody can get to my place because that street's closed all day. How do we go about and whose responsibility should that maybe be? So, I think we want to continue to look into that one and then also to really look at the impact of street construction on our businesses when we do something like we saw with Menominee Street. And staff, since they're looking at some more things with that two-year road cycle, we are asking to continue to review that process. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's a full plate. Councilmember Mitchell. Thank you. Just to be clear, the contracting out of snow removal is sidewalk snow removal, right? Not snow plowing?
Right.
Okay. I'm just going to comment, then I'll get to you. When we first tried a volunteer coordinator, we tried, we tried to, we asked her to develop a volunteer shoveling brigade sort of thing. It was tough. That's a really tough issue because of our ordinance requirements and the, is it 48 or 24 hours? I forget. 24 hours after the snow plow. So, yeah. And then, there's aging issues and disability issues and so. But it would be an important, if we could figure out a way to address that transportation and safety issue, that would be good.
And I think that was one of our big concerns. I mean, even for me, if you have a major snow event and you're out of town, you can't get back here. So, your sidewalk in front of your house is probably not getting done for 24 hours if you can't even get back to the city in 24 hours. So, you know, there has to be a fairness built in to, when does it automatically get done? And as the city manager and the staff explained, there are some ways they were going to look at doing this. To get it started, to get it implemented, if we were going to get down this route and it made sense that it wouldn't be just automatically, if your house isn't done in 24 hours, it's automatically done. More of the ones that may get called in and reported, more of the ones that we find rather than just have the snowplow operators report everybody that did it. So, we wanted to take that fairly slow and make sure that if we do it, it's done in a way that does good things for the city, but also doesn't penalize anyone.
Yeah, like a complaint basis or something. My mom lives alone now and as she ages, then these issues come more to my forefront because she just can't shovel her sidewalk anymore. So, then, of course, then I think they're more important. And that's how that goes. Anyway, Councilmember Strobel.
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple, couple small things to that. And something for the council to be thinking about that we're, on the asphalt concrete, when we come back with that, is we're also thinking about, there might be some special areas where the council deems it important for the look and the feel to have only concrete or only asphalt. And that might be part of that conversation too, like we had on Galloway Street. And then, one of the big things on the snow policy here, under the recommendations, is to remove the reference to a three-inch snow policy.
I saw that. Please.
The thought there was they didn't really use a true three-inch policy anyway, and that maybe they can work that in, that at any time it's above that. But we talked more about the accumulation and the type of snow and what it would take to do that. And we drop it from being the strict three-inch policy. And thank you, Mr. Strobel. I'm on cold medicine and just totally spaced those two out. So, thanks for covering us as well, your chair. I thought you weren't going to bring it up on purpose, so I wasn't going to bring it up, but since you brought it up. It would be a complicated algorithm of something.
And our last reporter.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief. So, I'm reporting on the work that committee did in evaluating the budget process. We, one of the first things we did was identify a complete list of activities that need to take place in the annual budget process calendar and identify timelines for early council, committee and public input in the annual budget process. If you look at page, I believe it's 64 of your packet, this is a copy of a document that was actually handed out to council at one of our earlier work sessions on the budget process. And I think it was useful to go through and helped us actually identify stages where the budget process does have mechanisms for that kind of input. In January, February and March, the city manager considers priorities and goals along with strategic plan with council during work sessions. In May, there are suggestions from the board and commissions, are, suggestions from the board and commissions are relayed to the city manager by department staff. Outside organizations are asked to submit their funding requests. And then, more recently, we have implemented the E2C2 online input mechanism, which is applied to the budget process in May. And then, in October, of course, we have three to four budget work sessions are held with council and public hearings on budgets are held. But I would also point out that the FISPAC itself is kind of, our schedule is set up so that we're working on issues that are important to the council in a manner whereby, we're a little late this year, but hopefully by mid-year, we have made a report to council on the issues that they've identified as important to them for the budget process. Then, we were to review policy, city policies on applying fund balances against the annual tax levy and the use of lapsing and non-lapsing funds in various accounts. The city council has held a couple of work sessions on fund balance and debt policies. As I mentioned earlier, that document on the budget process was handed out to council on that. And we're still working on those issues. In fact, we have another work session will be scheduled shortly. We worked on developing a, and recommend a three-year city council budget process review plan. And we looked at, in fact, the entire budget policy from the program of services is included in the packet here. So, we looked at possibilities of, you know, which areas we should start with that and identified evaluating the CIP enumeration process and clarify and recommend any needed improvements and deadlines for further decisions in the budget process. Develop a plan to review all written city budget policies and practices and identify timelines for those that need further evaluation. And identify ways in which key initiatives can be presented before budget work deadlines occur. So, we'll be moving forward with those areas in this three-year plan of reviewing the budget policies.
Good work by FISPAC. Huh.
We couldn't have done it without staff. I mean, you said it, but it's unbelievable what they bring to us and it's one, it's been great.
Good work by staff also. We are a city that works, after all. Congratulations. There were any other comments from council members? I think we're adopting this on tomorrow's agenda. No? No? Okay. It's just a report. And so, yeah, all right. Thank you for that. As I understand it, as initiatives come forward, of course, they would come back to the whole body, so we can... Councilmember Johnson.
Councilmember, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Strobel and the other members of the committee, Eric Larson and for Lewis for working hard on this. This has been a very difficult project and I think in my years of service on that committee, I thought we were working hard, but there's a lot more on here than we ever had. And I think that's what you expect. You expect us to grow ideas and things that you have and to continue to move through them because there's a lot of things that have not been looked at. A lot of things we deal with and we bump into them every once in a while. It's kind of like being in a bedroom at night, you don't turn the lights on and you trip over the shoes and you trip over something else in the room because you can't remember where they are. And I think every year, we found that there were things we were tripping on in the budget process and having an organized way of evaluating it and a very intentional way of looking ahead and changing things. And I think with the new finance director, I think Mr. Winsand is, brings to the table a lot of experience along with our city manager. And we have a chance now to really look at these things. And with the committee doing what they're doing, I wanted to thank them for the hard work. Councilmember Strobel, the chairman, said he wanted to put my name on it. I said, "Well, I'm not on the committee." So, you were on it before. I said, "Well, that'll just confuse people." So, I wanted to say that my name was not on the list of committee members only because we made the transition earlier this year and so. But the work here, product is stuff we started, but they've gone far beyond that and I commend them for the hard work. And I look forward to seeing the actual recommendations that we can then vote on and implement. It's a long process. No one ever said this was going to be easy, but it has to be done every once in a while.
Thank you. Thank you again for a good presentation. And I'm not coming, but the chair.
Pretty sure, your name was on the, was on the report. You knew that, right? Is that what you said? Your name was on the report.
If you're wondering why it's on, is my point, that it was because you suggested that I'd been on the committee and I said, "I don't have anything to add other than just what I said now," is to thank you and encourage you to keep going.
And that brings to a close our, oh, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on our FISPAC report? Seeing none. The chair will close the public portion of our meeting tonight and I want to thank all those in attendance. The city council will now convene in closed session to confer with the city attorney to discuss the terms and conditions and set the negotiating strategy regarding the lease at Carson Park with O'Clare, sorry, O'Clare Baseball LLC doing business as O'Clare Express and North Woods Leaf Inc., which is permitted in closed session for competitive and bargaining reasons, according to the Wisconsin statute. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Dux, the motion is in order to enter into closed session, is there a discussion? Being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Dux.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gabe.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Von Heeden.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
We will return to your program after a short break. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067 or on the web at www.ccbtv.org. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM. We now return you to your program. This is a rebroadcast of the O'Clare City Council Meeting.
This meeting of the O'Clare City Council will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Dux.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
And Gabe.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Larson.
Yes.
Lewis.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Von Heeden.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
John.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the July 22, 2014 Legislative Session of the O'Clare City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this duty by working with staff, by working with citizens and by reading the considerable amount of materials in our packet. And we are prepared this afternoon to finish our responsibility. will be viewing on community television due to our technical difficulty, community television is still not live this evening, but they are taping, so the, the meeting will be on community television in its entirety as soon as they can get it posted. Is that right? Okay. Soon as they can get it posted. And I'm sure they'll get that fixed as soon as they can. We do have important items on our agenda this afternoon, so let us begin with the, let us begin. The first order of business is the consent agenda. Council members have questions on any of the items in the consent agenda? Council member Duex?
I have some questions about items 18B, C, and D.
Okay. Procurement items? Questions about procurement items. Item 18 is a resolution approving bids and proposals. 18B is a procurement for citywide street seal coating program. Mr. Silver.
Good evening or afternoon.
Yeah.
Good day.
Your question?
If I could get that up there, I got the wrong page here. People are so much easier. Yes, they were, I remember. What I was getting at is on the seal code, we had two bidders, and I believe you said, well, go ahead, maybe explain, we did pick the low bid. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. There was a difference of $170,000 on those bids.
Yeah. It could be, it could be availability, I'm not sure. I didn't hear feedback from each individual one. I know when I had my DOT head on, Farner Asfalt did a lot of work for the interstate and the DOT, so it could be an availability of staff and, and resources.
It just looked a little odd.
Yeah, that's quite a big, that's quite a large bid variance.
It is, yeah. The second one was, okay. Yeah, 72. The lighting on page 72 and, how many, okay, I think, okay, there were, I didn't understand the tabulation, the difference. What, did you take some of the options on that?
Um, I'm not sure. The, the top, and I'll zoom in here. I guess basically the, the award of the 137,000, the top, those are the decorative light poles, those are the white way lighting. The bottom ones, and there was, there was four bidders for the top, for the decorative poles. The bottom are for traffic signals, the various traffic signals that go along with those luminaire arms and the signal pole itself. And there was two bidders for those. The total cost, we took the low bid contract for those, even though that there was a variance of costs. One was low bidder on one, one was low bidder on a different item, and we went with the low bidder overall so we could keep a consistency of the parts for that.
I see. Okay. That helps me understand that. And then in Gateway Business Park, it's a very large project. I wasn't sure of what all the work, could you explain exactly what all work is going to be proposed?
Sure. It's a construction project. It's street work. It's, here's County Line Road. Jeffers Road is over here. This is Highway T. Nestle's is approximately down in this area. This is in, I believe, TIFF 5, the TIFF 5 border that goes around out here. We're constructing an extension of Venture Drive from where it currently stops up to County Line Road and then constructing a portion of County Line Road approximately 1,000 feet here east and west, putting in storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main, making improvements.
Is that shared at all with the town of Wheaton?
It is not. We have jurisdictional control over County Line Road on that. This is, this project is the last year that we're able to make capital expenditures and improvements in TIFF 5 for that, so.
Thank you, help, the help.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Do council members have any other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, on a motion by council member Lewis, seconded by council member Klinkhammer, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And Gabe?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is approved. That opens up our business agenda for the afternoon with item number 19, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance of $4,720,000 in aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bonds for, for what Mr. Hoff will explain to us in just a moment. Mr. Hoff?
Thank you. As you recall, a few weeks ago, you approved a resolution to issue bonds. Today, we did sell the bonds, and so the resolutions before you are approving the sale of those bonds. Last week, we had a conference call, two conference calls with our rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Moody's, and they both affirmed our credit rating, Moody's AA1 and Standard and Poor's AA. So we did get the same bond rating that we had previously, which is good. We've got good interest rates on the bonds that we did issue today on this issue. The interest cost is about 2.9% over the life of the bonds. And so the resolution before you today is all the legalese approving the sale of that bond.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. I forgot to tell council that the, at your desk are the new bond agreement documents showing the sale today. Any questions for Mr. Hoff? Seeing none, thank you. On a motion then by council member Duex, seconded by council member John, item 19 is moved and discussion is in order. Council member Lewis?
Yes, just by way of explanation, is this just a bond for what the city's portion of these street improvements are? We can ask Mr. Hoff.
Yeah, these were the items that were identified in the CIP. And I don't know if I have, yeah, the street improvements of 3.7 million and the stormwater improvements of 1 million, and that's the amount being financed by this debt issue.
And then is it the second bond that are the ones that we assess the citizens for and they pay us back?
Yeah.
So they're separated?
Yeah, that's the notes, and those are a few things, including the special assessments.
Thank you. There being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Emanuel?
Aye.
And Gabe?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
And that resolution has passed. Item 20 is a resolution authorizing 4.155 million dollars in aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate promissory notes of the city of Eau Claire for, so it's going to be better prepared, for land building and equipment, special assessment, street work, and redemption of 2003 bonds. Mr. Hoff?
Yes, the, the notes that were issued were actually 4.1 million. There was a slight change in the amounts due to the amount needed for the, the refunding portion of the program, but we got excellent interest rates on these as well. Moody's and Standard and Poor's also affirmed our, our credit rating on these as AA1 from Moody's and AA from Standard and Poor's. The interest cost here is about 1.87%, and as you recall, we are refunding some prior issues that carried interest rates of like 3.8 to 4.5%. The interest rate here will generate savings, present value savings of 220,000 over the life of, of these notes. So we did, got a good rate on these.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Council member Strobel has the question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Does that, does that allow us to pay these bonds off sooner than the?
Yes, what, what we do is, is call the bonds and since, in a sense, then we pay the bondholders for those payments that we would have paid over the next 10 years, we pay them off now, and then we issue the debt for that money now, and that has the lower interest rate.
And council member Duex?
I don't know if I heard the interest rate on this one.
1.87%.
Okay. Question I've got, I noticed that a two-thirds vote is required on these and not on the others. Why is that?
Good question. I'm not sure of the legal difference between the, the notes and the bonds. I should also mention that in the audience, audience today, Brian Riley from Ellers is here. He's our financial advisor, and he's the one that helped put these packages together. And so, yeah, do you have an answer to that question or? Jake, okay?
Yeah, the reason a two-thirds vote is required for the sale of these notes is because we're refunding prior year's bonds, and so we need an appropriation to pay off the prior year's bonds. So because there's an appropriation, a two-thirds vote of the city council is required, and the resolution contains that appropriation language.
Mr. Winsand, would you mind introducing the gentleman?
Sure, absolutely.
We haven't met them yet.
Yep, Brian Riley with Ellers is with us this evening, and I believe, I haven't met him yet, but Patrick Malloy also with Ellers and Associates. Ellers is our financial advisor. We've been working with them both on the drafting of the project plans for TID 8 as well as TID 10, and they've also been working with the city on these bonds and sale of notes.
It's very nice to meet you.
You as well, thank you.
Further questions on this item? Council member Lewis?
Sorry, for one of our financial people? Following up on council member Strobel's question, so the amount of debt stays the same, but we're just paying off some early and transferring it forward, is that correct?
Yes, we are paying off two old issues with the money that is generated from this bond sale. Correct.
I see no further questions. And there being none on a motion by council member Strobel, seconded by council member Worthman, item 20 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our final agenda item regarding bonds and notes is item 21, a resolution authorizing appropriation to fund the redemption and repayment of 2001 and 2003 water utility revenue refunding bonds. Mr. Hoff?
Excellent, yes. As we also mentioned last time, we've got some existing water utility debt out there that carries a higher interest rate. And what we are going to do here is not reissue bonds, but we have enough cash to pay these off since there's only two and three years left to go on these. So what we will do is, is use the cash in, in the fund balance to pave this off in the water utility, and this is the appropriation that allows us to pay that off. By doing that, we generate savings of 117,400 in interest expense that we would have had to incur had we let these bonds run out over the next two to three years. And again, this is an appropriation resolution, and that's why we have the two-third vote on that.
Questions for Mr. Hoff? Seeing none, thank you. On a motion then by council member Mitchell, seconded by council member Von Hayden, item 20 moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please, oh, council member Duex?
Just one comment. I want to express appreciation to Mr. Winsand and Mr. Hoff for identifying these two. In this volatile era, era of municipal bond rates, we are constantly faced with having to refinance to get lower rates and take advantage of it, but it takes a staff that's watching these things carefully and making sure that they're making appropriate reviews of each one to find out if it's feasible, economically feasible and so forth, and appreciate the work of the consultant as well.
Now, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Now, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our final agenda item regarding bonds and notes is item 21, a resolution authorizing appropriation to fund the redemption and repayment of 2001 and 2003 water utility revenue refunding bonds. Mr. Hoff?
Excellent, yes. As we also mentioned last time, we've got some existing water utility debt out there that carries a higher interest rate, and what we are going to do here is not reissue bonds, but we have enough cash to pay these off since there's only two and three years left to go on these. So what we will do is, is use the cash in, in the fund balance to pave this off in the water utility, and this is the appropriation that allows us to pay that off. By doing that, we generate savings of 117,400 in interest expense that we would have had to incur had we let these bonds run out over the next two to three years. And again, this is an appropriation resolution, and that's why we have the two-third vote on that.
Questions for Mr. Hoff? Seeing none, thank you. On a motion then by council member Mitchell, seconded by council member Von Hayden, item 20 moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our final agenda item regarding bonds and notes is item 21, a resolution authorizing appropriation to fund the redemption and repayment of 2001 and 2003 water utility revenue refunding bonds. Mr. Hoff?
Excellent, yes. As we also mentioned last time, we've got some existing water utility debt out there that carries a higher interest rate, and what we are going to do here is not reissue bonds, but we have enough cash to pay these off since there's only two and three years left to go on these. So what we will do is, is use the cash in, in the fund balance to pave this off in the water utility, and this is the appropriation that allows us to pay that off. By doing that, we generate savings of 117,400 in interest expense that we would have had to incur had we let these bonds run out over the next two to three years. And again, this is an appropriation resolution, and that's why we have the two-third vote on that.
Questions for Mr. Hoff? Seeing none, thank you. On a motion then by council member Mitchell, seconded by council member Von Hayden, item 20 moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Council member Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our final agenda item regarding bonds and notes is item 21, a resolution authorizing appropriation to fund the redemption and repayment of 2001 and 2003 water utility And then the site would be the 60 bucks. And I don't know if there, we'll have to wait and see if there'd be any other charges for city, but I can't imagine that there would be, because it's a relatively, relatively simple structure to close off.
Yeah. Councilmember Mitchell has a question.
Thank you, I wondered about not serving alcohol as well as that for safety reasons?
I don't know, we'd have to ask the applicant for that answer.
There are a couple of reasons, we went back and forth about the alcohol issue, and we thought maybe we would try it without and then maybe introduce it as the years go and just try it for the first year. And also, another component of the event, not only is it gives us, it does a lot of things for us, this event, it features our local businesses that are taking part, it shows our scenic beauty of downtown, and it gives people a unique experience, and it will help the Chippewa Valley Theater Guild as well. It's a fundraiser for downtown Eau Claire as well as the Chippewa Valley Theater Guild, and we did a lot of things, they're going to be having some little children in tuxedos helping out that night, and so we thought just the coupling with that organization, that we wouldn't have alcohol, and then see how it goes. And actually, just the people who have been calling about it, no one has actually asked about what we're even having for dinner, it's been, they've just been excited about the event itself, and so they don't even particularly care. So we'll see when it comes to that evening if that's something that they would want added in.
Ms. Heller, can you tell us a little bit about how we would get tickets, or how do you go, or how many people?
It will be seating for 100, and it'll be a line of tables down the center of the bridge, and we'll be serving as a community, we'll eat as a community, just having this neat experience all together, and so they're just calling the downtown Eau Claire office and reserving spaces.
And then you buy a ticket that night or something?
We will get the tickets to them prior.
Okay. Councilmember Duex?
Just a question, and I know I saw this on the brochure, but I thought you might want to announce what the tickets are, the cost of them, and then secondly, do you have a menu, and just maybe you could advertise some of the great food you're going to serve?
Well, absolutely. Since it is a fundraiser, and part of the proceeds are going to Chippewa Valley Theater Guild, and the tips and things will go to the kids who are helping that evening. The tickets are two for $150, and otherwise, a single is $85, and we already have about 80 spoken for. Very, has been very well received. The dinner will include participation from, we're focusing, we tried to focus on the West Grand Avenue Business Improvement District and the businesses that comprise that area, just to give them a little showcase, a little showcase those businesses a little bit. So the Corton House is going to come over and serve appetizers, Hooligans will have the main course, and that will be chicken cordon bleu and a potato and a vegetable, and then dessert first, we'll have the dessert.
That sounds very well thought out. Thanks for your energy for putting it together.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. And a motion then by Councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Lewis, item 22 is moved, discussion in order. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 23 is a resolution authorizing UW Eau Claire to conduct neighborhood grill and chill on September 12th. Mr. Fevere?
This is an event that UWC would host in Owen Park. It would, it's designed to attract students that are living off-campus and other residents in the Randall Park neighborhood to come together and socialize prior to the start of the school year. The university is doing, has been doing a number of outreach opportunities, tours of the downtown area. This is an event that would complement other tours that'll be going down on downtown, be held on Friday, September 12th. And Peggy O'Halloran, the organizer, is available to answer any questions. Was recommended for approval by Waterways.
Questions for Mr. Fevere? Councilmember Lewis, is this an alcohol-free event also?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fevere. I see no further questions. And a motion by Councilmember Clint Hammer, seconded by Councilmember Duex, item 23 is moved. Discussion on this item? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to speak in support of this item. I think this is a really strategic move from the university, and I know that Ms. Halloran was, part of her position that she was hired for is to help be a convener between the university and neighborhood and the students. And when we think about Randall Park neighborhood in particular, that has some struggles with older housing stock and units and bringing people together, this is an excellent idea to bring people together in a public space, to allow people to form neighborly relationships and get to know each other. So hats off to Ms. O'Halloran's leadership on this, and I think it will be a great event.
There being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Mr. Fevere, did the applicants wish to speak about their event?
If you guys have questions, we will speak, we'll say hi.
I attended the last several years, so it's very good and informative, and I bought a great rain barrel. I hope the rain barrel later is there again.
She will later.
Okay. Oh, and did you have your light on, Councilor? No, you did have your light on, but. Thank you, and good luck with your event and its new venue. Item 25 is a resolution authorizing UW Eau Claire American Red Cross Club to conduct the Run Red 5K on October 11th. Mr. Fevere?
The American Red Cross now has a chapter on the UWC campus as a new student organization, and this is their, one of their first events that they're running. The Run Red 5K is a fundraiser to promote awareness for measles and rebellion initiative and promote vaccines and worldwide vaccines. The student group, the organizers, do not live in the Eau Claire area, so they're not able to attend tonight to answer any specific questions, but the Special Events Committee and Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval of their event.
Questions for Mr. Fevere? Councilmember Duex?
I observed, as I'm sure everyone else has, the growth in the number of runs we're having in the community, and it's becoming so popular that I, do you keep track of the number of runs we've had per year going back, let's say, 10 years?
12 years, since I've been here, we've been keeping track of them, yeah.
I'd be interested in seeing a recap of those because it must have really, it must be a huge...
It's doubled in the last 12 years.
Seems like even more than that, it seems like every meeting we have, several of these now, and, well, that's good.
That's become almost a problem because there's three and four 5K races on a single day, and they all need to, all need to start in different locations, so we're running out of parks to start 5K races, but it's not unusual that we'll have a 5K race that'll start at Phoenix Park, and two hours later, there'll be one that starts in Carson Park, and a couple hours later, there'll be one that starts in Owen Park, and they'll use the same trails, but they'll be going different ways. But running is certainly a very popular activity. A lot of these events are being run as fundraisers to create dollars for operating budgets, but also to create awareness for their projects. So we're glad to accommodate them.
Thank you, Mr. Fevere. Seeing no further questions, the chair will move item 25 on a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell. Discussion on this item? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 26 is a resolution authorizing the sale of the Silver Mine Ski Hill to the Eau Claire Ski Club. Mr. Fevere, we've had an introductory item to this idea previously, so...
Yes, yes.
...right down to it.
Okay. The Silver Mine Ski property is located probably three to five miles southwest of city limits. I'm sure you've seen the 90-meter ski jump out there, there's an annual competition held each year. This property is actually owned by the City of Eau Claire, and we lease it to the Eau Claire Ski Jumping Club. The club has recently contacted us to see if we would be willing to sell this property back to them. Back in the 60s, in order to accommodate Hendrickson Hill and a future road that was going to be an extension of Highway 37 into the downtown area, the ski jumping club that was at Hendrickson Hill, Putnam Park, was asked to leave, so they did. They relocated their jump to this area out here, they purchased this property, and then they essentially moved all their equipment back there, and then the city reimbursed them for part of that cost, and a lot of this was explained in the past, but basically, the property was reverted to the city, and then the city carried the insurance on that, on this property. Now, the ski jumping club desires to make some significant improvements in here, there's been very renewed interest by a number of outstanding young athletes in ski jumping in Eau Claire, and in anticipation of that growth and that interest in ski jumping, the club would like to require this, reacquire this property from the city so that, because they think that they will have a better shot at getting a loan if they own the property, they think they'll have a better shot at fundraising when they own this property, and they desire to make some significant improvements in here to expand their ski jumping operation. They are willing to have a clause in the sale agreement that would, if the Eau Claire Ski Jumping Club disbanded, that the property would revert to the Flying Eagles, which is the youth club, and then any other ski jumping club that was still in existence. And if there was no additional ski jumping opportunity in Eau Claire, the property, the park would then revert back to the City of Eau Claire for park purposes, so, and the club is interested in pursuing the opportunity to purchase that property again with those contingencies. Doug Wall is the president of the Eau Claire Ski Jumping Club and is present today to answer any questions. The sale of the land was recommended for approval by Waterways and the Plan Commission. Any questions for either myself or Doug Wall?
Councilmember Lewis has a question.
Sure, if the property were to revert back to the city, is that a revert without cost, or would we be buying it at the new assessed land value? If they're doing improvements and things there?
Well, we wouldn't be getting back, and perhaps is a question for the city attorney, but we, if there is no interest in ski jumping, we're not going to be operating a ski jumping operation there, so I can't imagine that we would acquire it with the expectation that we would maintain the facilities. Is that your question?
No, my question was, you said if the ski jumping associations ceased to exist, that the property would come back to the city for City Park. Does it come back to the city for City Park at no cost, or would we be buying it from whoever the last owning ski association was?
Let Steve answer that one.
Yeah, it said no cost. In terms of personal property improvements, if, you know, if the club, before its dissolution, hadn't removed that, I suppose it'd become the city's, but the various improvements of ski jump or other equipment out there, hopefully, presumably, none of this happens. But, you know, to the extent that that's already kept or given back to individual members and these sort of athletic groups, a lot of times, you know, one of the family buys it anyway and sort of donates it to the club while their family member is involved. So that type of personal property would probably head back to the club or those participating, and if they're still involved with the property itself, any fixtures on it, if that reversion would ever be involved, it would come to the city at no cost.
Councilmember Duex?
I notice in clause 13 of the agreement, there's a provision that says property dimensions of surveys, and it says seller, meaning the City of Eau Claire, shall retain a sanitary sewer easement and storm sewer easement, as shown on the certified survey map. This being in the town of Union, on an area far from the boundaries of the City of Eau Claire, what storm sewer easement would the City of Eau Claire have?
Well, the City of Eau Claire owns land further to the east, so I think it was if we ever, if we ever did extend sewer service to that area, that we would retain the right to have an easement through there. The shooting range is out in that direction, so.
All right.
That was a thought process, it was just a habit.
It's an easement only, there's no...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Fevere, here's a what-if question that I hadn't thought about tonight, actually, when you mentioned about the improvements, but let's say the club borrows money from the bank, they use that property as collateral, and then they go maybe belly up on the loan to the bank, would that property not revert to the lender at that point?
Well, that, and again, perhaps that's the question for the city attorney, but they would have to, they would have to work that out with the bank. The bank would have to, their collateral would be the equipment that would be purchased, that would be my interpretation of what would happen there.
Mr. Nick?
Do you want to miss one? Yeah. The bank, the bank would only be able to mortgage the deed in the condition that the deed is transferred to the Ski Jump Association, so we intend to transfer with the reversion. That'll be recorded first, that's the type of deed they'll obtain. So in terms of, I mean, they'll have to figure out how valuable that is in terms of a bank being able to mortgage it, if that really is something that happens, but the reversion clause would take precedence.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions on this item? And on a motion by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, item 26 is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to say thank you to Phil for the work and bringing all the parties together and making modifications and working with all the different parties, it's just...
Well, that, and again, perhaps that's the question for the city attorney, but they would have to, they would have to work that out with the bank. The bank would have to, their collateral would be the equipment that would be purchased. That would be my interpretation of what would happen there.
Mr. Nick?
Do you want to miss one? Yeah. The bank would only be able to mortgage the deed in the condition that the deed is transferred to the Ski Jump Association. So, we intend to transfer with the reversion. That'll be recorded first. That's the type of deed they'll obtain. So, in terms of, I mean, they'll have to figure out how valuable that is in terms of a bank being able to mortgage it if that really is something that happens. But, the reversion clause would take precedence.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions on this item and on a motion by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, item 26 is moved and discussion is in order.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to Phil for the work and bringing all the parties together and making modifications and working with all the different parties. It's just, yeah, hats off to you for the good work on this, Phil.
Thank you. There being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
John? Or Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 27 on our business agenda is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property at the intersection of Cameron Street and Interstate 94. Mr. Strober?
Recently this spring, we were approached by a developer who is continuing on a long-term in the process development on the west side of Eau Claire. The limits of the next extension of that subdivision extend out to Interstate 94. Here is a map of the extension of the subdivision. Here's Cameron Street. Here's Interstate 94. And previously, before my joining the state or the city, probably about 10 years ago, this came forth and in the long-term comprehensive plan of the City of Eau Claire, there's, it contains identifying Cameron Street and Interstate 94 as an area for potential interchange at some point in the future. It doesn't necessitate the interchange at this point in time. So, the developer was told at that time to map out an area that would be a good footprint for a northeast ramp onto the interstate. Jump forward to the spring and the development is continuing and we were approached by the developer to purchase this outlot or make it available for him to sell as part of his subdivision. Since it is part of the comprehensive plan for the City of Eau Claire, I contacted the Department of Transportation because there are very strict requirements for access to the interstate, particularly interchange. And previous practice had shown, we would have to show that the interstate interchange is at 312 and Highway 3785. We're breaking down in capacity. There would be gridlock before they would consider alternate access between the two. And that being the case, it would be a long time and it probably wouldn't make sense to purchase the land. Since then, when I had a discussion with the planning chief for DOT, he'd indicated that if there is development or something of regional significance out in that area that necessitated and showed that an interchange would be warranted, then there would be a possibility that it would be granted. And it would be anywhere from 100% city, local, and county cost to some state and federal funding, depending upon the significance and I would presume politics with what development would spur that. One condition for that is the city and county, when they develop along Cameron Street, need to preserve it as a corridor that would function reliably and safely under the additional traffic that interchange would bring, i.e. paying close attention to the number of access points to it, not allowing driveways out on the Cameron Street needlessly. And that's something that we have pursued when we review plats and access along that street so far. The agreed to, we did receive an appraisal from J.C. Norby. It was agreed to in price with the property owner. And I guess the last thing I'll show is just the comprehensive plan sheet identifying. This is from the 2005 comprehensive plan. And these, the blue are the existing interchanges and the yellows are the proposed future. It was presented to Plan Commission and it was approved, it was recommended for approval 8-0.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Von Hayden?
Could you put the map back up again, please?
The plat map?
Okay. The yellow, what we're showing, what's that other piece of land between the yellow and that?
Right here, there is a utility. It looks like a communications facility there. So, if an interchange went in, that utility would need to be relocated.
Okay. So, that's not available?
It wasn't. We have not been approached by the owner of the utility to purchase that at this time. If it were to become available, I think we'd probably have that discussion again to try and piecemeal together as we're approached. But, we didn't aggressively or didn't even non-aggressively seek out to purchase this. We were approached to purchase it and...
The other thing would be, is in the documents that we received, your item 10 says binding acceptance should be honored before Friday, July 25th.
Yeah, we had the party that we're purchasing from come in and sign a new one on Friday.
Oh, okay.
So, we do have Friday, August 29th in here, so we're on the up and up with the paperwork.
Okay. And I guess my last question on this is, is this something that we should consider based on your expertise as our traffic engineer and these types of things? Are we just putting good money after bad money?
If I were to, I would say that it gives us an opportunity 50 years in the future if Eau Claire's population is 100, 150,000 people. And we are at the point where development along the north crossing, for $29,000, we can actually fit a folded interchange in here. So, we could fit two of the four ramps that we would need. An on-ramp would be here, then we'd have a loop that comes down. So, we would be halfway there and it would give us an opportunity. In the meantime, we would have a little green space buffer between the neighborhood and the interstate. From what I understand, there's a church that is looking at purchasing land next to it. Perhaps a long-term lease agreement with them could be reached where they could use it for playground or ball fields or something in the interim. So, there would be some value that way, too.
About how much land is this?
2.28 acres. And the agreed to price was $29,000. So, it's a $29,000 opportunity for the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis has a question.
When this was plotted and they were asked to make that an outlot, did we then have a first option or a right of refusal if it was ever offered for sale? Or did they only approach us?
It's my understanding that they approached us. Through the plat review process 10 years ago, the plat would not have been favorably recommended for approval if that would not have been included in that at that time. We were approached this spring, this January, February, and we didn't exercise an option on it. We were just approached, we received an appraisal and then our finance area made the negotiations with them.
Follow-up. If this would become off-ramps and things, would the city be able to sell that property to either the state or I don't know who controls that? Would we then transfer ownership or do we own that property, those off-ramps and beyond?
Well, the ownership, the dollars that we spend on it, if the policies in the future are the same as they are now, that would be a contribution that we would make towards the project. So, we would be contributing $29,000 worth of land towards the project. We would, if an interchange went in here largely, we would be, have a cost component. The township possibly could, the county most certainly would have a component. So, the land would become part of Interstate 94 roadway right-of-way instead of city-owned property. But, we would receive a credit towards our financial obligations of $29,000.
And now, and then until that time that this had become road, the city is responsible for maintaining it, mowing it, carrying insurance on it, all those kinds of things?
I think our insurance. I'm not sure that we would recommend mowing it out there, but it would be city-owned, it would be a vacant city-owned lot.
Councilmember Lewis?
Mr. Strobel, I have, Mr. Strobel. Mr. Strobel. I have a few questions here and I, you and I have gone over these, but I think it's important. Back when the comprehensive plan was up to 10 years ago, nine years ago, Federal Highway Administration attitudes toward opening this up was quite difficult. And I believe you've intimated that that's been relaxed a little bit in the processes and is perhaps more optimistic than it was 10 years ago when we were talking about it. Second question is related. You mentioned the commitment we have to make to maintaining Cameron Street as a arterial street or...
It would be at least a collector, probably if an interchange went in, it would bump it up to an arterial.
Arterial street. Since Cameron does go through considerable residential property on both the Town of Union side and the City of Eau Claire side, how difficult would this be to control and maintain? Do you think that is a barrier? We have to do this for the next 10 or 20 years even before the intersection?
Well, it's obviously a lot easier to do it when we're plating new lands. When you get between the edge of the subdivision and into town into the older areas, the first thing that typically happens is they try to find alternate back access and remove the access out to the street. There would definitely be impacts. I mean, there would be, if something went in that necessitated the interchange or we're at a growth at that level, an expansion of Cameron Street beyond even what it is now wouldn't come without some pretty significant challenges and decisions that would have to be made.
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
Oh, sorry.
And I guess to address the first one, 10 years ago, when the city approached, there's different economic times. There was, you know, the economy was rolling along. And now, it's my understanding that instead of just looking at capacity issues on the interstate, the adjacent interchanges for those failing in capacity, if there's something that's of regional benefit and regional significance enough, if we were to put a gas station in a corner and, you know, a small thing, it probably would not be approved. But, if, you know, when Boeing was looking around for a different area, if there was something that was very significant, you know, a medical campus, a large regional retail, then it's something that at least the possibility is there for that. The door isn't shut before we even approach it.
Just one follow-up question. The other thing we discussed together was partnership between the county and the city and maybe the Town of Union. Could you elaborate on that?
Well, the funding and that would, if, to speculate, not projecting on politics, politics, I think as everybody's aware, could play heavily into the funding and who pays for it. If it's a typical project, they look at traffic that's generated, donations of land, donations of effort and so forth. We have Cameron Street, which is city jurisdiction. We have the Town of Union. We have the county, County Trunk Highway E, I believe it is. So, all portions of governmental entities that have an interest in this would have to work together and there would be most likely a ratio worked out for a percentage of who would pay for it. I would largely expect if an interchange was proposed and approved here, that the DOT would marshal the project through the environmental process and the design and the construction. They would take care of that themselves because of the interstate. But, we would be part of the planning process and the payment process and there really wouldn't be any local approvals required for it. But, we would be part of the process and it would require everybody being in the same step. I don't think it would go through if the county wasn't on board or if the city wasn't on board or the township for that. So, we need to maintain those relationships and I'm recommending for 2015 comprehensive plan that this stays in as a proposed location, at least on the radar.
Councilmember Lewis?
I understand that they want to sell this to us. Is that land actually developable if we didn't buy it? Could they actually get any lots or roads back in there or would this always remain an outlot no matter what?
They could expand the lots larger, but putting in a road and having a house or something here is impractical. It would most likely be, if we didn't request this, the lots coming off of here would be deeper lots or the road configuration could have been changed to allow, possibly this could have swooped down, this part of the road could have come down further.
So, is, how much of that is developed out there now? Are there homes out there?
There are some. I have an aerial. Not currently. Here is... Well, not right now. This is from our 2013 aerials, I believe. And the part that we're talking about is right here. And this is that utility substation. And here are the...
Thank you. Councilmember Von Hayden has one.
Do we have sufficient funds someplace, some way to cover this if we would happen to decide to buy it?
I've been told that we do have sufficient funds in our real estate. I forget what fund they have to buy real estate as it pops up like this. I'm not sure if they have the, I don't have my crystal reports with me, but...
But, you've checked it out and to the best of your knowledge, there are sufficient cash available?
Yes. We don't have a project that we're buying it for, a roadway project, but there is a fund available for real estate when it becomes available.
Thank you, Mr. Strober. I think we've come to the end of our questions. And so, on a motion by Councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Lewis, item 27 is moved, seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, and discussion is in order. Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. The Plan Commission talked about this quite a bit and recommended approval and I think it's a good investment. And one of the things we said, although it was after the meeting, that 50 years from now, people will say, who were those forward-looking people that bought this land so that we don't have to build an interchange through people's backyards? Because that is what the developer was wanting to do, is expand the lots. But, I also want to make clear that this does not pave the way for an interchange. This is not going to happen in any of our, at least, times on the city council or perhaps a lifetime. So, this is not an imminent thing. But, I do think that it's a good investment and will save some headache down the road if an interchange ever is built.
Well, I'm optimistic. I think I'm going to live long enough to see that eventually. I think the West Bank development could very easily be the catalyst that would require this. And I agree. I think that whatever happened years ago to earmark this when that property was plotted that got us to this point now was very forward-thinking and I think that the acquisition of this property is essential.
Further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
No.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 28 is a resolution approving procurement number 2014-52 for the rehabilitation of deck and pedestrian and bike railing on the Chippewa River, Chippewa River High Bridge. Mr. Strober?
Okay. This is a much-talked-about high bridge project. It crosses the Chippewa River from Forest Street to First Street between the Dells Pond Dam and Madison Street Bridge. This project was originally approved for funding by the state in 2009. It was appropriated funds in 2011 and we had planned for construction in 2015. There was a state statute change that necessitated us moving this project up to be advertised for bid by July 1st of 2014. Otherwise, the $494,000 worth of funds that we were granted would not be released to us. Here's the high bridge that crosses the river. Here's a Madison Street Bridge. Here's a Dells Pond Dam. Forest Street comes along the river here. And this project will build the approach from First Street to the river, redeck the bridge with a railing that is similar or exactly the same as the S-Bridge rail. And it will then connect to Forest Street whereupon bicycles and pedestrians for the interim will be able to access Phoenix Park down Forest Street. And then, at some point in the future, we do have plans for a trail, a better, more proper trail along the river in that park. The CIP appropriation for this was based upon the $494,000 that we were granted at $600,000. We did have, we do have a bridge maintenance fund. We did have, we do have a bridge maintenance fund that has balance in it to cover the cost, the additional cost. The engineer's estimate was 1.3 million and it was bid at 1.1 million. The bids came in under engineer's estimate. But the inflation from 2009 to 2014 almost doubled the cost of the project. So that, having an appropriation from the bridge fund, fund balance to this project will require two-thirds vote, and that's what we're seeking for this. Construction would be scheduled to begin this fall. We do, I have talked to the successful bidder about a cost reduction proposal for the type of treatment of the timbers. There's two types of treatment to treat the rails with so they don't corrode and up to $100,000 could be saved if we swap out treatments on those. The appearance would be the same and the performance is the same. It was just an availability of, one is more available than the other currently for this time frame.
Councilmember Von Hayden has a question.
When you were talking about the funds availability, where is this cash?
I'll defer to our finance director for that if you would. We do have a normal fund. We have over $900,000 for bridge repair and maintenance projects. That isn't specifically tied to a bridge, but I'll let Jay further elaborate if you would.
I think Mr. Solberg pretty much answered the question. There is a project within the bridge fund for bridge maintenance that has sufficient balance at this point in time to cover the $600,000 for this particular project. In addition to, we've had some conversations about future years projects that are planned to make sure that there's enough in there to cover the future years projects as well. So that's what we're looking at. Then, and you know, this gets back to taking a look at those project balances and making sure that they're still necessary. So we're looking at that.
Okay, well, we're still waiting to see the list of those.
It's coming.
But, so what you're saying is this cash is sitting in our investments right now?
Yes, sir.
Further question, Councilmember Lewis?
Maybe I need to ask Mr. Winston of this again. The grant was $494,000. And what did we have in the CIP? Did you say $600,000?
We had, there's a project in the CIP identified at $600,000 and that was based on an 80/20 match of 80% federal funds, 20% city funds on there. If the estimate at the time would have been a million, it largely would have been 800,000 state, 20,000 city. But here is the project, or 200,000, the 600,000 here.
There is 600,000. So the difference that you have to make up from that bridge maintenance fund is about 50, yeah, about $60,000. The bid is 1,149,000.
500,000.
What?
$500,000. And there's a balance of a little over 900,000 in there if I'm correct.
1.1 million, am I looking at the wrong one? 1.149 million?
Minus the 600,000 that we had in there. So 500,000.
Now, are we obligated then to complete this by December 30th?
We are not. Our only obligation was to have it advertised by July 1st of 2014, so...
Were you concerned at all about the fact that you only received one bid?
I, a little bit. If the cost would have been over the engineer's estimate, I would be more concerned, but it was actually less than our consulting firm had estimated for it. I'm not sure what the market is for these specialty products. It's Pember Companies Auto Menominee is doing the project. We're finding that our contractors doing our street work and our road work are extremely busy. I guess I'd be speculating, but I don't know if they fully staffed back up after the recession hit and they're having just-in-time delivery for our road projects and that largely may be the same case with bridge stuff.
You mentioned that the cost had, did you say doubled between 2009?
Well, the original approval from DOT in early 2009 was, the project estimate was $600,000. And now the bids came in at 1.15 million or 1.129. And hopefully we can save close to $100,000 with a changing of corrosion protection for the wood. Yes, we're working hard to try and bring the cost down as much as possible. Plus, we have some spare parts left from the S-Bridge that, they were extra parts, they weren't spare. Everything, everything, everything was installed in the S-Bridge, although I'll preface, that was before my time here. But some of these panels, 40 of these panels are left. We ordered extras at the time in case they were hit or needed to be replaced. None have been hit or needed to be replaced, so they're available also in that. I talked to the contractor, that could bring the price down also. Didn't mean to scare anybody.
You also have some bridge flags up there, up there in previous places, maybe you could contribute those to the project as well?
I would like for the city to get an award on this project, both for connecting trails in parts of the city over the river and the historic nature of the bridge. I mean, it's not even a steel bridge, it's an iron bridge. It's that old, so it's an asset for our community. I believe 1890-something, 1880-something.
A little gem. Councilmember Strobel has a question too.
I do thank you, Mr. Solberg. I know we've had a lot of questions on the money, I'm just, I'm still having a hard time following it a little bit, so help me out. $600,000 appropriation to be funded from the bridge's fund balance, does that include the $494,000 you were just talking about or...
The $494,000 is, will come from the state. So if we have 1.1 million, we'll round it up to 5 million. Our part would be 600,000, or round, round the $494 up to 500,000. So the total project's 1.1 million. The state will give us 500,000 and then we're, we'll be paying 600,000 out of our, out of our city funds. Of that 600,000, $120,000 was set aside under the high bridge project, in a separate project. And then the remaining will come from our bridge maintenance and rehab fund, from here.
So there's a separate bridge fund balance?
Yeah, well, I'll have another project that's coming through in November for our yearly bridge maintenance program. Madison Street Bridge has some joints that need to be repaired on it. Dewey Street needs some repair on the arches. So there's a pot of money that's grown over the years that is available and this is basically a rehab project for the high bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Solberg, a couple of questions. Is, I'm just thinking about safety and was that part of the discussion on this? Because, you know, there's not a lot in it maybe that we can do, but I have seen different designs in different cities where there's overpasses and things like that. This is, this bridge is pretty high and I don't know if that's, if we're accounting for that with this design.
It is, it is a rather large bridge, tall bridge, high bridge. But these railings are specifically designed for that. They're at a height that are, meet national standards for riding on a bicycle and a pedestrian. So they're specifically designed to hold you in. With the grating that's in here, that would help deter people from sticking their feet and climbing over. We have people that go across it nowadays, only so much that we can, we could do. But this is exactly the same as the S-Bridge and I'm not aware of, that's quite high also and I'm not aware of any accidents, that's about 12 years old I believe, of people jumping off or doing anything on purpose.
And then follow-up question about the connecting trails. What is your impression in terms of a timeline for those? Because I'm pretty excited that someone involved at the Forest Street Community Gardens can, you know, get some connecting trails that will come through that part.
We do have a plan in the works right now. The design plan is done, but we're running short on funds for the street portion of it to connect, and I didn't, this'll work, for the connection on the west side of the river. We have some flooding that's occurring up in here. So the bridge itself won't be, most likely won't be done before snow flies this year. So what we're hoping for is to bid the project that will connect from First Street up to, I believe that's Roosevelt School, with the stormwater project and then have this trail done. And my goal is to have it open by Memorial Day weekend of next year. And we haven't started our design. We have some schematics of the design going down through the neighborhood, but nothing on paper. So in the interim, we're going to be using Forest Street on this side as an access. So I'm hoping for next summer, we have this, you know, nice facility open for next year. And there'll be, I believe, six overlooks similar to the bump outs that are on the S-Bridge on the high bridge. So there'll be three looking up towards the dam. Actually, you look over the top of the dam and then three looking down towards Phoenix Park. And it will be lit also. It will have lighting going across the bridge, so that portion of safety will be covered also.
I guess a final question from Councilmember Lewis.
You mentioned that you have some schematics or something. And I remember Mr. Amundson brought in some drawings for two different routes for coming off that bridge on the east end of the bridge. And one of them involved going through some city property, I think kind of spiraling down because I guess there's a maximum level of incline that you can have on those for ADA or something.
Yep, 5%.
5%, I guess, okay. And the other one snaked down behind the city shop buildings and went, and then presumably was going to go down through the community gardens, right through Councilmember Worthman's garden, right in the middle of it. But is that what you're referring to?
Correct, in the future. I don't have a specific year in mind for it. We're looking at redoing Forest Street probably in 2019 after the Eddy Street Bridge is replaced in 2018. I'd like to have it done before then, but the worst case, that's when it could be. But as far as city staff going out and engaging the neighborhood and having talks and going through the, dusting off those schematics, we haven't begun that process yet.
Well, then we'll have a bridge, but we can't use it. I mean, it'll be blocked off on the line?
No, you'll be able to use it. Right now, there's those two, there's two bridges that go across Forest Street and it's going to be coming down the grade between those. And you'll come out to the sidewalk on Forest Street. So it's ADA accessible, the design is approved. It's just not as nice as the future. It's a minimalist design for it, so, yep, it'll be fully usable this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg.
Or next summer, yeah.
I believe we've come to the end of our questions and we appreciate your patience with us. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, I'm going backwards here. Item 28 is moved and discussion is in order. The resolution does require eight affirmative votes. And clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 29 is a resolution amending, amending the final resolution to 14-21, approving the improvement project on Galloway Street, North Barstow to North Dewey. We had a presentation on this item last evening. Do councilmembers have further questions? I believe the resolution is on itself, is on page 168. Any questions, Councilmember Duex?
Yeah, my question would be, in view of, Mr. Meyer said last night that they're going to have to examine whether this fits in with their project well enough financially and so on. And it was stated that, well, the project is underway now and he'd have to make up his mind quite quickly. Since we're already adopting an amended program, I'm wondering what happens if, let's say, a week from now he contacts you and says, oh, looks like we can't quite do it now that we've already amended this. So is that a problem or...
Mr. Solberg?
The way I'm proceeding with the project is that he had three requests that weren't optional in his, in his mind. The change in parking ordinance, that'll be the first read tonight. The electrical conduit, that will be a few hundred dollars connecting those two. And then that bump out. So we'll construct that if it's approved tonight. If we don't have a decision from him by the time we're placing our flat work for decorative, then it's my, my decision, I guess, or my thoughts, that we would do it as originally approved. And then his special assessments would just reflect the cost for the electrical conduit and if there's any additional cost for the bump out that was constructed. The bump out should be minimal because we're swapping concrete pavement for a concrete sidewalk. But if we don't have an answer and a definitive, we'll do it as originally approved.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions on the motion by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Larson. Item 29 is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Lewis?
If I'm looking at this right, doesn't number 11 on the now-thought-out floor be it resolved? It says there shall be construction of stamped and stained decorative concrete. So if they decide to not do it, don't we have to come back and change that?
I think Mr. Solberg tried to explain, but again... I'm just questioning the word "shall" being there. It almost could be "there might be."
Maybe an amendment or a change would be warranted, say, if requested by the proposal. But yeah, I'm not sure. Ultimately, it's your decision if you want to make it a hard and fast. You brought it to us, we're going to make you do it regardless or what flexibility you want to afford him. That probably would be a good idea to address that.
The chair would entertain a motion to amend. Councilmember Lewis?
I would suggest at the request of the property owner, there may be stamped and stained decorative concrete. It's just adding then, beginning to.
At the, item number 11 on page 168 would read, at the request of the property owner, there may be construction. Done. Got that? Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I have a question before.
Okay.
Are all four things really are conditional? Aren't they? Aren't all four?
I think Mr. Solberg described that 12, 13, and 14 are not conditional according to those.
Okay, okay. That's right.
And there's a second by Councilmember Mitchell. Discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we're back to the resolution as amended. Further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 29 is a resolution amending, amending the final resolution to 14-21, approving the improvement project on Galloway Street, North Barstow to North Dewey. We had a presentation on this item last evening. Do councilmembers have further questions? I believe the resolution is on itself, is on page 168. Any questions, Councilmember Duex?
Yeah, my question would be, in view of, Mr. Meyer said last night that they're going to have to examine whether this fits in with their project well enough financially and so on. And it was stated that, well, the project is underway now and he'd have to make up his mind quite quickly. Since we're already adopting an amended program, I'm wondering what happens if, let's say, a week from now he contacts you and says, oh, looks like we can't quite do it now that we've already amended this. So is that a problem or...
Mr. Solberg?
The way I'm proceeding with the project is that he had three requests that weren't optional in his, in his mind. The change in parking ordinance, that'll be the first read tonight. The electrical conduit, that will be a few hundred dollars connecting those two. And then that bump out. So we'll construct that if it's approved tonight. If we don't have a decision from him by the time we're placing our flat work for decorative, then it's my, my decision, I guess, or my thoughts, that we would do it as originally
at things that happened with the Confluence project. Because of this information that was presented last night and also looking at the resolution that, when talking to my other fellow council members, some of the verbiage in there may have been a little confusing and not quite as concise as everybody would like to see. I think at this point, it makes the most sense for us and I'm going to request that I pull back the resolution at this point in time and that we look at this in the future as we go forward.
The mover has requested a withdrawal of his motion. Is that amenable to the second? It is amenable to both the motioner and the seconder. The resolution, the motion to resolve is withdrawn. And that brings us to our ordinances for action. We have one of them. An ordinance, item 32 is an ordinance rezoning property southwest of Keystone Crossing and Bullis Farm Row. Any questions for Mr. Ryder from staff, or of, from council regarding this project? On the motion then by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Klinghammer, item 32 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The final item on our business agenda is a resolution restricting the city expenditure until such time as funding is approved by the state, by the state for the Confluence Community Art Center. Completion of the private fundraising and satisfying of other contingencies. This item was requested by councilmembers Von Hayden and councilmembers Duex. Councilmember Duex, thanks. We had a long public hearing last evening and input. I would defer to Councilmember Von Hayden to just, to introduce his motion.
Thank you, President Kincaid. I'd like to thank all of the people that came last night and made presentations. They brought out a lot of inter, interesting information and I thought it helps us in the future as we make decisions on this project. I also like to thank Jay Windsor, I think, something like that. We'll get it correct someday, Jay. But anyhow, I thank him for his presentation last night. I think that also was very helpful to us. And also to our city attorney and city manager as they defined out that the various programs and agendas and steps that we will be going through here in the future and the various public hearings we will have as we work for getting a new development plan and for looking at things that happened with the Confluence project. Because of this information that was presented last night and also looking at the resolution that, when talking to my other fellow council members, some of the verbiage in there may have been a little confusing and not quite as concise as everybody would like to see. I think at this point, it makes the most sense for us and I'm going to request that I pull back the resolution at this point in time and that we look at this in the future as we go forward.
The mover has requested a withdrawal of his motion. Is that amenable to the second? It is amenable to both the motioner and the seconder. The resolution, the motion to resolve is withdrawn. And that brings us to our ordinances for action. We have one of them. An ordinance, item 32 is an ordinance rezoning property southwest of Keystone Crossing and Bullis Farm Row. Any questions for Mr. Ryder from staff, or of, from council regarding this project? On the motion then by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Klinghammer, item 32 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The final item on our business agenda is a resolution restricting the city expenditure until such time as funding is approved by the state, by the state for the Confluence Community Art Center. Completion of the private fundraising and satisfying of other contingencies. This item was requested by councilmembers Von Hayden and councilmembers Duex. Councilmember Duex, thanks. We had a long public hearing last evening and input. I would defer to Councilmember Von Hayden to just, to introduce his motion.
Thank you, President Kincaid. I'd like to thank all of the people that came last night and made presentations. They brought out a lot of inter, interesting information and I thought it helps us in the future as we make decisions on this project. I also like to thank Jay Windsor, I think, something like that. We'll get it correct someday, Jay. But anyhow, I thank him for his presentation last night. I think that also was very helpful to us. And also to our city attorney and city manager as they defined out that the various programs and agendas and steps that we will be going through here in the future and the various public hearings we will have as we work for getting a new development plan and for looking at things that happened with the Confluence project. Because of this information that was presented last night and also looking at the resolution that, when talking to my other fellow council members, some of the verbiage in there may have been a little confusing and not quite as concise as everybody would like to see. I think at this point, it makes the most sense for us and I'm going to request that I pull back the resolution at this point in time and that we look at this in the future as we go forward.
The mover has requested a withdrawal of his motion. Is that amenable to the second? It is amenable to both the motioner and the seconder. The resolution, the motion to resolve is withdrawn. And that brings us to our ordinances for action. We have one of them. An ordinance, item 32 is an ordinance rezoning property southwest of Keystone Crossing and Bullis Farm Row. Any questions for Mr. Ryder from staff, or of, from council regarding this project? On the motion then by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Klinghammer, item 32 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Duex?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. I have several ordinances for introduction tonight. I will read them as is my responsibility. Item 33, an ordinance rezoning property at 1417 and 1427 Meadow Lane from TR1 to R1. Item 34, an ordinance amending chapter 9.16 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Fair Housing. Item 35 for introduction, an ordinance amending section 9.32 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Discharging Firearms to reflect changes in municipal bans on bow hunting. Item 36, an ordinance amending table 9 of the City Code entitled Parking During Specified Hours by creating a section entitled 15 Minutes at All Times for the property along Galloway Street at the address, oh, I don't have the address, for a property along Galloway Street. And finally, an ordinance for introduction tonight, annexing to the city, I'm sorry, annexing to the city of Eau Claire part of the town of Washington known as the GUMZ petition, G-U-M-Z, at the address of 3123 Pine Lodge Road. Do council members wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these ordinances? There being no such desire, announcements and directives are in order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Just a reminder that this Friday, the Chamber of Commerce eggs an issue that we held at